Ally, are we ready? Okay. Well, good evening and welcome to the May 7th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. Mayor Debbie Burtland. Would Ally Speitz, who is acting city clerk, please call roll?
I'd be honored to. Mayor Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Saleem Neese.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Andrell. Councilmember Bruce Bassett. Councilmember Wendy Wyker. Councilmember David Wiesentiner. Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Great, so thank you. First item of business is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
First and second and all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and the agenda is approved. And we're gonna start this evening with a study session. An Agenda Bill 5558.
I'm sorry, Mary. Just to make sure we're clear. Item 6 was the continued discussion of Mercer Island in Transit Interchange. And I saw a note saying that was off of our agenda. But it's on this agenda that's in my packet. So I'd just like to clarify. Is it off of what we just approved? Or is it on what we just approved? What's going on?
It was our understanding that there just wasn't going to be an Agenda Bill produced for it, but that you would still be having a discussion this evening.
Ah, okay. Thank you very much for that.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So again, the study session this evening is Agenda Bill 5558, Arch Operations and Management. And for that, we are welcoming Allison Van Gorp and the new Executive Director from Arch, who I want to provide the opportunity to introduce herself. So, so thank you and take it away. Okay, can we check the mics? See if they're on?
There we go.
Super. Thanks and welcome.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. So I'm here, as is the custom, once a year we come and Arch talks about our budget and work program. And this year, I think we wanted to take a little extra time. One, me being new. But two, with some of the recent news stories going on, to give a little bit of a deeper dive into that work that is part of our ongoing work program. And also just sort of a reminder about who Arch is, how we're structured, how we work with our member cities. For those of you that haven't had as many years of experience with Arch. So diving right in. Arch is an inter-local agency. We were created by cities in East King County in 1993. And essentially, we are an extension of cities. We are the vehicle that cities choose to use to deploy their affordable housing plans and policies. And the kind of vision of Arch is that it's all of these communities deciding to work together collaboratively. And you can see all of our member cities are listed above. We total 15 members, excuse me, 15 member cities in King County. And that kind of vision for Arch is reflected in how we are structured and governed. So the structure that was created for Arch is that we are governed by an executive board. And that board is comprised of all of our member city representatives. So Mercer Island, for example, has a seat on that board. And Julie has been a really wonderful and active board member. That body makes most of the governing decisions for the organization. But they also importantly send a lot of the actions and recommendations back to all of the individual city councils that comprise Arch. And I'll go through some of those specific actions that take place. In addition to the executive board, we do rely on a citizen advisory board. That was part of the original structure that was created when Arch was created. And that was really intended to give us a grounding in the communities who we're trying to serve. And those typically are members that are selected with the aim of geographic representation across our region, as well as folks who have particular expertise and interests in housing. And we're fortunate to have a couple of members from Mercer Island who serve on that board. The city of Bellevue has a unique role with Arch. They agreed several years into the creation of Arch to become our administering agency. So they provide a lot of the administrative infrastructure for us to operate, both IT and legal services, as well as accounting. So some of those specific actions that do have to come back to you on a regular basis. One is this annual action that you're considering now, which is approving our budget and work program. And then secondly, approval of the actual allocations of Housing Trust Fund. So important to distinguish here for you, there are two sort of budget allocations that Arch comes to you with each year. One being the basic funding for our operations. And that gets sort of distributed across cities on a population basis. And then second is Housing Trust Fund allocations. And those are the funds that cities have jointly decided to invest into individual housing projects. So those go through a lengthy review process. First by our citizen advisory board. And second through our executive board, as well as receiving vetting from staff. And once those recommendations have been finalized, they come back to you for your actual approval to release those funds. I'll say I'll come back to that a little bit more later as well. This is just helpful for those of you who have kind of a visual learning sense. This is the structure of Arch in a diagram. So above, you see all of the member city councils. And below that, the executive board. And then we, as the staff, and we currently have five staff, report to our executive board. So some of the things we do, we do the day-to-day work of the organization. And we provide quarterly reports up to our board. And we prepare sort of the information for them on a monthly basis. They meet each month to discuss the work of the organization and how we're doing against our work program. Then off to the side, you have planning departments. And that's kind of another key relationship that we've fostered over the years, is that we convene planners from all of the different member cities. And we have sort of a liaison group. And Allison has been wonderful in that role as well. So I'm gonna touch on some of the key ways that we do our work with our member cities. As I was discussing previously, one of the foremost ways that Arch cities have decided to collaborate is that they have created an Arch Housing Trust Fund. And this is a way for cities who may not have sufficient resources individually to pool their resources together and create a more substantial pool to invest in projects. And this, you know, stepping back a little bit, is a unique model in that it gives sort of the east side projects a leg up in the competition for other resources. So Arch has been able to successfully bring in a lot of state Housing Trust Fund and King County resources to match your local dollars. And that is a significant role for our staff as well, is to be doing a lot of that funding coordination, both with public and private sources of financing. We also try to identify surplus public property that can be made available for affordable housing. And that's been a really successful model. A number of examples of that in Arch's portfolio. And we just do a lot of individual work with groups who are trying to figure out how do they make affordable projects work? And those might be small, community-based organizations. Or those might be developers with a little bit more substantial resources. We provide a lot of technical assistance. So a little bit more deep dive into the Housing Trust Fund and how the, kind of how the formula was developed over time for what cities would contribute. Importantly, it's always a voluntary contribution each year. It's up to each individual city to decide what do they have the capacity to provide in a given year. But over time, to try to create some stability in the fund, there was a methodology developed that established a low end and a high end for the goals for each city to shoot for. And really to evaluate that over a long period of time so that, you know, it's not seen as a failing in a given year. If a city can't come up with the resources and you sort of, you know, look at it over a longer period of time, recognizing there might be good years and bad years. Most recently, that formula was updated to account for inflation because goals had not been updated to account for inflation in quite some time. And I think in the future, the Arch Board has indicated a desire to sort of look at whether there could be more aspirational goals set above past contribution amounts. So this is a chart that shows you what those goals look like today for all of our member cities. And then what the contributions were in 2018. And important to note, too, that it's not only general fund contributions that are counted towards member cities' contributions, but also additional forms of contribution, whether that be donation or discounted land or fee waivers and/or pass-through of CDPG. And that last resource is something that Mercer Island has been able to get credit for in our calculations. So the second significant way that we assist our member cities is that we do a lot of housing policy and planning work. And this can run the gamut of things. And really, a lot of it is as individual cities decide they want to do something in a given year, they will identify it for us in our work program. And we'll do our best to accommodate that. A lot of what that has involved is assistance with creation of housing elements in comprehensive plans. Some cities have developed individual housing strategy plans that are kind of the next step of, you know, you have housing, high-level housing policies. Here are the actions you want to take to try and help implement those. In addition, we get, we have provided a lot of support in helping to develop incentive programs that incentivize new development to include affordable units in it. We also have participated in a lot of regional planning efforts. And the goal there being, again, to give East King County communities more of a voice in those efforts. Most recently, the Regional Affordable Housing Task Force being one of those efforts. And in addition, something that we try to do our best to stay abreast of is legislative issues, both at the state and federal level. And right now, the state level obviously being a very active place where a lot of housing issues have gotten discussed. The third real value that we provide for members is that once you have kind of developed those housing programs and policies, we help you to administer them and implement them. So for example, in an incentive program that you might create in your zoning code, or if you adopt a property tax exemption as an incentive, we will help you to develop those contracts and work with the individual developers to execute those and record them, and then monitor them on a long-term basis. For Housing Trust Fund projects, same thing. We help develop the contracts. We work with all the other funders to bring that financing together into the construction of the project. And then we monitor the affordability long-term, as well as in cases where there are loan repayments required, we monitor those as well. A significant part of what we do is our homeownership program. And so those are cases, and I'm gonna come back and talk a lot about that at the end as well. Those are cases where through, largely through incentive programs, there have been new resale-restricted affordable homeownership homes created. And the difference kind of there with all of the rental units that are created is that those require a lot more hands-on administration. So each time a home changes hands, we are there to make sure that it passes on to a new qualified buyer and that it's sold at an affordable price, consistent with all the restrictions and the covenants. A big part of that, too, is sort of funneling all of the interested applicants for these programs. And so we see a lot of people come through our door looking for affordable housing. And so the big part of my staff's time is kind of responding to that interest and helping people to navigate. And particularly for those who might qualify for the homeownership program, helping them get on our waitlist for that program. The last thing that we do is, kind of falls in the bucket of education and outreach. And this is sort of, I would say, an area where I see a lot of future growth in our program. Housing has become much more of a public issue and a thing people want to know about and be educated about. Not just elected officials, but just members of the community. So Arch in the past has typically had an annual housing event that we put on. We basically have an educational function that we provide for elected officials. We also take time to recognize outstanding housing projects and efforts. And that's something that we've used our citizen advisory board to help, help put on, on occasion. And then finally, we do try to build connections amongst community groups. So again, kind of that on-the-ground connections with those who just want to figure out, want to figure out how to, how to help the issue in their own community. So recent examples of that would include churches who have property that they want to figure out what can they do with it? How can they make it available to affordable housing? So Arch is sort of well-positioned to connect them to potential partners, provide them with technical assistance and things like that. There's a couple slides here just on kind of high-level data snapshots of the impact of this work. So the Housing Trust Fund, in particular, has been responsible for the creation or preservation of over 3,600 units of housing and/or shelter beds, which are the small minority of where the funds have gone. And those are invested over four key population targets. And this is something the Arch Board has established as its priorities over time, is to invest in housing for families, housing for seniors, housing for those who are coming out of homelessness, and housing for people with special needs. And then there's a whole diverse range of groups that fall into that bucket. Importantly, so that, that column on the right, that's totaled close to $63 million in local investment over about 25 years. And those local funds have been leveraged $9 for every local dollar of funds to make these projects happen, which is a really good rate of leverage. Again, for the visually inclined, this is a map of where those projects have been located by type of project. And it has been an important value to Arch. And something that we've always driven for is to have geographic distribution of the projects, again, across the communities. This is a chart that shows you the production of units through kind of that other strategy, which is incentive and inclusionary programs. So develop new private developments that include affordable units in them. No public investments happening there. We now have 10 cities that have adopted programs like this, including Mercer Island. Some of them have taken mandatory approaches, some voluntary. All of the affordability ranges set aside are sort of locally tailored. And so as you can see from the chart, there has been a big boom in that, in these programs. And a lot of production in the last few years corresponding with kind of the increase in development activity. And that is something that we've been trying to, you know, understand. If that's, how long is that gonna continue? And is it gonna start to slow down a little bit? It certainly has meant a lot of activity for our, for our staff in processing all those new units, getting them online. This is a few photos of recent projects. On the left is the 30 Bellevue project. That's developed by Imagine Housing in partnership with St. Luke's Church in Bellevue. And that is a project that is very near to completion. And they're gonna be getting ready to have an opening and make those homes available to people. And I can say that the units were leased up very quickly. There's a lot of demand for those. The middle picture is the, is a new development in Redmond, a private development that was subject to Redmond's inclusionary housing policy. So there are 12 units affordable at 80% of median income included in there. And then on the right is the Women and Family Shelter that is just broke ground in Kirkland and is gonna be serving women and families 24 hours a day in a permanent shelter location. So a big part of what we did in talking about our work program for the year is kind of look at the daunting number of things included in there and really try to elevate what we consider to be our priorities for the year. The things that we want to make sure that we focus on and accomplish. And so four priorities came out of that board discussion. One was a real focus on strengthening our administering, our administration and monitoring functions. And a big part of that was kind of recognizing some of the stories in the news that we really needed to just address right away. But also recognizing the growth of the programs that Arch is overseeing. And so kind of taking a moment to step back and reflect on everything we've accomplished and what do we need to sustain and preserve those over time. Another big focus for us was taking advantage of the opportunities for transit-oriented development with the coming light rail projects. And so a big part of that is working with Sound Transit that has really been aggressive about developing its TOD program and implementing the policy that the state legislature imposed that required them to prioritize affordable housing in the disposition of surplus property. And so that's created some really amazing opportunities to site affordable housing right next to future light rail. Third is sort of, where are we gonna come up with the resources to get projects done? I think, you know, Arch has been really successful at pooling together resources and kind of using that and sometimes aggregating a couple of years' funding to get projects done. But we know the demand has, has multiplied in the time that Arch has been in existence. And so rather than kind of continue along the path of trying to identify enough general fund resources, we, we want to facilitate some conversations about whether dedicated revenue sources could be appropriate for certain communities. So I see our role really as facilitating those conversations, helping to develop the options and provide the analysis for cities. And then letting cities kind of have that conversation. Finally, we wanted to spend some time, and this really came out of a staff conversation, looking at who is being served by all this housing that we're creating. And what, you know, one of the things I experienced coming in is that we haven't spent a lot of time trying to collect data on that. And being, you know, being small staff, that's, that's very understandable. But I think we did want to spend some effort in this year figuring out what would it take to better understand who is accessing all this housing, whether it reflects the communities that we're trying to serve. So stepping back just a little bit, I wanna, and then I can close on what Mercer Island's work program activities are for, are for the year. In fact, let me cover that first. So in addition to kind of those four key areas that are in our work program from year to year and some of the key priorities we've pulled out of that, each individual member city also identifies tasks that it wants Arch's assistance in completing. And so these are the activities that Mercer Island staff identified. Some of these just do relate to ongoing administration of programs. So for example, the land use incentive and tax exemption programs, as well as development of fee and lieu options for a specific development. So the, and I'm happy to answer questions about that. In fact, let me pause right there before I launch into the, the work of our monitoring. But I'm happy to take questions just kind of on the basics of Arch, the ways that we work with member cities, the budget process, et cetera.
So council, are there any general questions about Arch itself? As I understand, we will be moving into a more detailed conversation in just a few minutes about the monitoring and enforcement. Questions that I think that have come up through the press. But to date, to the moment, any questions?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Hi, thank you for coming tonight. Can you tell me how much is in the trust fund right now?
As far as the commit, the total balance or the outstanding uncommitted?
The total balance?
Currently, and I actually, let me, let me see if I can find the exact number for you before I say it. And the reason I pause just a moment is that we have, have an active discussion with our executive board about whether certain of the funds in the, that are held in the account by Bellevue are fully dedicated to the Housing Trust Fund. And for the large majority of that, about $4 million or so, that, that is the case. There is a separate set of funds. And for legal reasons, the city of Bellevue has a different account from the other cities that are held separately. And so I think right now, I can't really speak to those. But for the other cities, I can speak to that.
Okay. If you can't answer it tonight, that's fine. But I would be interested in knowing how much is in the trust fund in total and how much is in uncommitted funds?
Sure.
And then when you say make surplus public land available for transit-oriented development, do you have an example or examples of what that's looked like in other communities?
Yeah. So one of the examples that's held up a lot is the Velocity Project in South Kirkland. And that was a property that was owned by King County Metro. And they decided that they wanted to make it available for transit-oriented development. So they went through a process to select a developer. And it was a partnership of a market rate developer and affordable housing developer. And there was a lot of thought put into some of the zoning policies put in place for that project to include a significant set aside of affordable units. And there were Arch resources invested in that project as well. So it included a market rate component, an affordable housing component, and then a bunch of transit infrastructure as well.
Okay.
Great. I'm gonna see if other council members have a question first, before we get into multiples, unless this is a follow-up to it.
It was, whether it was built or not.
Okay.
Done. Is it completed?
Yes.
Council, are there any other questions? Okay, I've actually got one. It's more in the administrative side of things. In the exec, or the Agenda Bill that we have, it references that the CAP makes final recommendations to the executive board, which must approve them before Arch staff bring recommendations back to councils. Once all councils have approved funds, Arch staff work with the city of Bellevue to develop legal contracts and covenants. So that's regarding the commitments and expenditures on individual, individual projects. Does that require unanimous agreement from all councils within Arch? A majority or some other?
So the way that it works is each So the way that it works is each city is, is requested to approve, approve its individual contribution. Um, so an, any individual city might say, for whatever reason, we don't agree with putting the funds in this particular project. Um, as far as I know, that's never happened, but that is, that is kind of your local authority to make that decision on an individual project basis.
And yet the project could go forward on the basis, assuming there's sufficient funds, the project could go forward with the support of those that do opt in?
Sure.
Okay, great, thanks. Saleem?
So I think you've seen this question because I asked it in the written form earlier today. Um, but as I've followed the Arch conversation over the years, there's always been this kind of vague element of what is Arch, what gap is Arch filling that Mercer Island cannot fulfill in its own zoning code? And I think many people understand that our town center zoning has um allowances for ten percent um at a certain median income and that they get a height allowance for that. But there's an element that we discussed kind of in writing today that is that gap below that, right? And the requirement of the Growth Management Act to quote, "make adequate provisions for existing and projected needs of all economic segments of the community." Can you just talk a bit about the gap that Arch fills that we cannot or choose to not fill on Mercer Island? That is that uh kind of Growth Management Act or legal requirement?
Yeah, in the response I sent to Saleem earlier today, um, one distinction I made is that the um zoning code provisions we have here in Mercer Island, the Town Center Code and the A D U Code in particular, help to provide housing that's affordable to more of a moderate income um type of renter. So in Town Center, we require that ten percent of units for buildings that want to achieve the full height allowance, they need to be affordable to seventy percent of the area median income. And then A D U's don't have a particular affordability requirement, but because they're typically smaller units associated with another property, they do have a more affordable market rate rent. Um, and so those can help to address needs of folks in more of a moderate income range, but it doesn't really address the very low and low income individuals and families that might be more at like a sixty percent of uh area median income or below. And so the work we do with Arch on the Housing Trust Fund, um, that focuses on those low income and very low income um families and households.
And so just to bookend that conversation, if we didn't do Arch and if we wanted to through our zoning, support those, those strata of income that are within our community but below the current seventy percent, what would you kind of envision we would see? It would be things like A D U's with uh rent rates that were much, much lower or?
The rent rates would be substantially lower. And I mean, the way it works with um the programs Arch helps to run and, and contributes to through the Housing Trust Fund, those, those um units are created through subsidies, whether they're um city funds that we contribute to the Housing Trust Fund, county funds, state funds, federal dollars. Um, there's a lot of public money that goes into creating those units and that's how they're able to achieve those low rents. Um, I'm not really sure how you would create that in a market-based development?
Probably through incentives, you know, we would have to have some sort of homeowner-based incentive to keep a rent at a below-market rate.
I mean, with the current Town Center system, we did some economic analysis when we were developing that program and deciding how many units should we require to be affordable and at what level of affordability. Um, we worked with a consultant to do an economic analysis looking at those affordability requirements, the height limits, parking requirements, um green building requirements. We were layering on a number of different requirements to these projects and we knew that that would affect the economic feasibility of the development. And so there was a lot of discussion and analysis of how much could we require and still have um development of the Town Center be economic. And so I'm not sure that we could require a lot deeper affordability without affecting that equation significantly.
And so the final question is how low do we need to go to satisfy that legal requirement? Because it's talking about means within a community, do we hit it at fifty percent, forty percent? Has anybody studied that?
So I think the way the countywide planning policies break out the income groups is there's a share that are extremely low income, earning less than thirty percent of the median income.
Little more, Mike, please.
Sure, so that's a share that are extremely low income, um earning less than thirty percent of the area median. And then some that are at fifty percent, earning less than fifty percent of the median income, and then a share earning less than eighty percent of the median income. Um, and as far as I know, most of the incentive programs that exist across the region typically do not get below fifty percent of median income and that's when you layer on both a full property tax exemption on top of density bonuses. Um, I don't know of a, a situation where a city's been able to get deeper than that, although it has been discussed, um certainly. And those are, those are trade-offs each community can make.
Thank you.
Great, Lisa, you have more?
A couple more follow-ups, yeah. I haven't been that familiar with Arch, so I've got a little bit of a learning curve. You talk about um the Town Center development here for, at the Hadley, having um thirteen units affordable to seventy percent A M I. And um, so I assume that that was um ten percent, so there would have been a hundred and thirty units, is that?
That's actually not correct. I don't know the exact number of units in that building, it's approximately two hundred, I think. Um, that building was permitted prior to the current Town Center regulations and that affordability requirement was established through a development agreement.
Okay, and so what does affordable to seventy percent area median income mean? I mean, I assume we can establish what the area median income is, we can establish what seventy percent is, um, that's math. But what does affordable to mean?
So you look at the number of people in the household and then there's an assumption that they should spend about thirty percent of their income towards the housing costs, including rent, utilities and things of that nature.
Well, so it doesn't matter how many people are in the household, it just matters-
It does matter how many people are in the household.
It matters how many wage earners there are or?
It looks at the total number.
I think we've got our planning-
It's set-
No, please continue, I just wanna make sure that we recognize that Evan's also here too.
Yeah, and the area median income is set um for, I think, the three county area based on the median income of everyone living in Kings, Snohomish and Pierce Counties.
Okay.
And then they create charts that look at the size of the household from one to five individuals and calculate out what that number is for each percentage level.
So the rent is gonna vary then for each unit depending on who the applicants as tenants are?
Um, so the way, there are, there are some programs that operate that way. The way most of the incentive programs operate is there's a presumed household size. Um, so for a studio, it's a presumed household size of one and there's a rent set, set based on that presumed household size.
Uh, but there's no um requirement that that household be that size?
Sure, if, if two people say wanted to rent a studio, they, they could do that.
Um, okay, that's it until we get into the um more specifics of the audits and whatever.
Um, I would suggest then, why don't we go ahead and move into that for the-
Sure.
Well-being of time.
Yeah, and I think this was helpful just to kind of give a flavor of the types of um housing and how it's created. Um, so just setting in context, kind of the range of units that Arch helps to monitor affordability on for, for all of our members. Um, in total, I think we've created or are having development close to six thousand affordable units. Um, as I showed in the chart before, over thirty-six hundred of those are through Housing Trust Fund investment. Um, those are primarily rental projects that are a hundred percent affordable. Um, and those we share monitoring uh functions with other public funders. Um, and so Arch participates in statewide public funding coordination. Um, there's been a lot of good work to build up best practices statewide about how funders coordinate those efforts. Um, there's been a web-based system for reporting created for all those projects um and an ongoing monitoring task force that, that convenes about once a quarter, um just to talk about how, how it's going, best practices, et cetera. Um, so for the trust fund projects, we, we share a lot of that responsibility with um the county and the state who are typical funders in those projects as well. Um, for land use and incentive projects, those are kind of a different category. Um, those are ones that haven't received any investment of public funds, but have been created through um those, the programs that we were just talking about. Um, the vast majority of those, again, are rental developments and that's just based on what's being built in the market. Um, so we have about a thousand rental units that are already occupied um and another uh six hundred that we know of that are in the pipeline. I think there's even more than that that just haven't gotten to the point yet of recording covenant. Um, so that's a fast-growing portion of the program. And for those units, we uh collect annually a compliance report from the individual property managers who are managing those developments for um the developer, the owner. Um, and what we do is we review those uh reports annually. We follow up and, on any corrections that are needed. Um, and that is an area, I think, that has been, again, has been growing. And so we're, we're taking a hard look at our staff capacity to continue um absorbing that um additional units. Um, I think also we're gonna take um some time and we had, did identify some uh additional work that we would like to do um last fall in terms of increasing our level of oversight on those projects as well. Separate from those, there are the homeownership units that I talked about and those are again created through some of those same mechanisms where developers um are required to include some of their units at affordable prices. Uh, and so what Arch does is we work with that developer upfront to identify the affordable units, um to set the prices based on a calculation of what would be affordable to a set income threshold. And then we help to identify the actual buyers for those units. Um, and for new units, we, there's, there's a huge amount of demand for those. So we have a process um where people are able to get on a list and eventually rise to the top of the list um and be eligible to offer to purchase those. Um, once those units are sold, there's kind of an ongoing stewardship of the affordability covenant um that Arch has been responsible for. Um, and what that entails um in the past typically has been that at resale, we work with the individual owner to set their resale price. And we do help them with some of the marketing, but we don't necessarily name who the buyer's gonna be. Um, they're, they're welcome to market it on the open market and find somebody that way. Um, and then we also, again, fix the price for them based on a formula that is put into their covenant at the time. Um, and this, this, this strategy, this program has been around uh since the early nineties. So as you could imagine, there's been kind of different iterations of the covenant over time, uh different jurisdictions who've um approached the program a little bit differently and have had the units created through development agreements, some um through incentive programs. Um, so we've tried to create as, Arch has tried to create as much consistency as possible across all those jurisdictions. Um, and there are a lot of commonalities, but also some key differences. Um, one of the things that is different is that there's a pretty wide range in the incomes that are being targeted by various units. So I think the lowest that we have, um, and there's very few of these, serve down to fifty percent of median income. And the highest go all the way up to a hundred twenty percent of median income. Uh, the bulk of the units are targeted to serve households earning no more than eighty percent of median income. Um, one of the challenges that has come up for that program over time is that um the formulas set forth in the covenants have allowed owners to um generate appreciation in their units. Um, again, balanced with trying to preserve the affordability, but the formulas were sort of created based on a best estimate of how, how you would best balance both of those things. What we did not account for is the, I think, the extremely fast growth of market real estate prices um compared to those, those affordable prices. So the value of the units has grown substantially in the last three or four years. Um, and I think appropriate with that is that we've gotta put increased oversight and enforcement on preserving those units. Um, so one of the things that we've, and so, sorry, I'll, I'll pause for questions too, but um I wanna talk about what we've been doing since last October. Um, and that's really when the news stories started coming out, it's when I first started at Arch. So it was timely for me to really sit down and learn all about how the program operates, um what our practices have been. Um, we wanted to do a couple of things based on what was happening. We wanted to, one, directly address all of the violations um that were being brought to light. And so we've taken um a significant amount of staff time to just audit the program. And that's included reviewing every single unit against um a couple of different data sets. And it's also included responding to any information that we've gotten from various sources um on the ground about which owners might not be in compliance with the requirements of the program. Um, and so that's been an ongoing process. The other thing we wanted to do was step back and just say, how is, how, how did we kind of get into this circumstance? What are the best practices that Arch could be implementing that we haven't been implementing? What are, how do these really align with the objectives of the program? Do we have the appropriate staffing resources to carry out all these best practices? And so what we asked our uh board to do was give us some resources to hire consultants. So um we recommended that in November and in December, the board approved thirty-five thousand dollars for a contract um for a consultant. So we went out right away in January with a procurement and hired someone, um, I believe, uh by the end of the month. So we've been trying to move quickly on that work.
Assuming you're contracted with them by the end of this month?
No, that was January, the end of January. Um, and that uh took a little while for the contract to get done. Um, but the work has been underway for the last uh probably more than two months now. And so that's kind of been happening in tandem with individual audit process um of all the units. So right now, um, there's, the consultant is drafting a report. Um, he came out for a site visit, took us through um an assessment tool that asked over seventy questions about uh individual policies and procedures um and is gonna generate a series of findings and recommendations. Um, and then the process is that the Arch Board will be kind of evaluating those recommendations and coming up with an action plan. And that ultimately um will likely entail some things that come back to you as city councils um to really give direction as to what you think the program should be doing. What are the priorities if there, if there is a need for impact, uh increased staffing? You know, do you feel like the outcomes associated with that are merited by that increase in staffing? Um, so that's something that we expect to come back to you in the um, the fall budget process. I'm gonna pause for questions there.
Okay, that's great, uh Benson?
Again, thank you for uh coming here and making a presentation. I, I guess, before you started getting into the new efforts that Arch is thinking of doing with uh based on recommendations from the consultant, you were just basically telling us exactly what Arch has been doing in terms of monitoring, requiring annual compliance certificates of some sort. You know, obviously, um, what was being done didn't work. At least there was a lot, a lot of holes and a lot of people who violated. Do you have a sense, I mean, your, uh, the Agenda Bill simply says that you guys are doing an initial review and basically identified a, a small percentage of people who are non-compliant. I'm curious what that percentage was. And then, more importantly, what is being done now? Uh, you obviously have identified some people who are not in compliance. So what is being done, what can be done to hold those people accountable?
Sure, um, and I, I hesitate to give you a final percentage 'cause we're still investigating um a share of units. I think we've got, um, we've gotten through the majority of them and determined that um of the fifty or so that we felt like merited a deeper investigation, we have a grasp of how many of those actually were violations and how many of those are people who actually were in compliance. Um, but there are still several that are under review and so. Um, but what, what we've done through that process is for those where we've determined there, there, there is a violation and owners have kind of come forth and shared documentation demonstrating that, we've worked with the individual jurisdiction that holds that covenant um and talked, talked through what kind of their, their various remedies might be. And that, that's kind of an individual si- decision for that city uh between them and their legal counsel, what, kind of what actions they wanna take. Uh, but for example, a lot of- But for example, a lot of the covenants include provisions that allow cities to recoup any rent that was collected without approval for renting. And so that's a really strong tool that was put into many of the legal documents. A lot of, in a lot of cases, I think the remedy has included that owners need to sell their units. And so if they haven't been using them as their principal home, I think there's kind of an understanding that they need to sell those to someone who, who does need that home.
Yeah.
So, I, I think those are all great. I mean, do you know if, if in fact the cities, certain cities are actually doing that or forcing people to sell or to disgorge?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Lisa?
Thanks. Again, I have two questions. One is just a clarification. Who, I don't know if you mentioned the consultant's name.
Sure. Rick Jacobus with Street Level Advisors is the consultant.
What was the name?
Rick Jacobus.
Oh, Rick. Okay. And then the other question is also on this compliance thing, but not speaking about the ownership units so much as the rentals. Have you undertaken any sort of an audit to ensure the degree of compliance with the parameters for the rental units?
And, and can you clarify which rental units you're talking about?
Any Arch-supported rental units?
So for the, the Housing Trust Fund, the tool that we use is our annual compliance reports. And those are reports that are submitted through a web-based system that all the statewide public funders use. And so those reports get compared against the contract requirements every year. A lot of the coordination work that happens is that there's typically a schedule where funders will go out every X many years. And in addition to reviewing the, the reports that are submitted, also audit the files that are onsite in the development against those individual reports. For the land use projects where Arch really is the only entity that is responsible for overseeing the compliance, we have not taken that additional step of going onsite and auditing the files that are housed within the individual property managers, but that's something that we recommended that we do going forward, subject to having kind of the adequate staffing to do that.
And how many units would fall into that latter category?
We have about 1,000 units that are in, that are occupied, that are in the rental category for land use.
Okay. Thank you.
Wendy?
So first of all, I want to acknowledge Julie Underwood, who serves on your advisory board. Thank you for your service. And Lucio Perozio Burley and George Whitman are in the audience. They serve on your community advisory board. I want to thank them for their service and for being here tonight. And then as you're probably aware, we're having some financial challenges in this city looking forward. And I know that our contribution this year is slated to be 50K. If that were to be lowered, can you tell me what impact that might have on your operations and our standing in, in the process and doing our part to address affordable housing on Mercer Island and the region?
Sure. And I, I want to confirm that you are referring to the Housing Trust Fund contribution separately. There's kind of a contribution to Arch operations.
Right. The 33 and the 20 that's averaging out to 50. And I know this body's going to deliberate that quite extensively at some point.
That's not quite correct. So in our current budget, we're budgeted to give 33,000 approximately for the operating and then an additional 50 for the Housing Trust Fund.
What does that look like if that were to go down?
So for the Housing Trust Fund contribution, what that would look like is when we go out in June typically and publish an annual funding availability notice, we would, we would publish a slightly lower amount that doesn't include that $50,000. And so it would kind of lower the overall pool of available funds that would be made available to projects to compete for.
You know, I was curious when you, I'm trying to find it now, but you mentioned that recently they changed the range, I'm sorry, the dollar, here, here it is. From 32,000 to 124, it's been changed to 15,878 to 127. How did that, I mean, can you explain that? I'm, I'm just kind of curious why, frankly, why it went down. So anyway, if you can do that.
So whereas your contributions to our operating budget are strictly kind of based on per capita, the Housing Trust Fund formula is a more, a little bit of a more complicated formula that looks at projected housing and employment as well as population. And so by comparison, I think Mercer Island's projected housing and employment is, has not grown as fast as other, other Arch member cities. And because kind of the goal, the goal was kept constant but for inflation, but the redistribution happened based on those targets, some cities' goals, you know, went up a little and some cities went down a little bit.
Celine?
So I know that you said the consultant was going to ask you serious questions and you were going to come back to the cities to try and gauge levels of support versus, I guess, intensity of compliance or compliance-type countermeasures. I had asked this question in the same email about could some of that rate be passed on to the beneficiaries of the units or the developers? And maybe this is less of a question, more of a statement, but if you have any, if you have any control in setting any rates, especially rental rates, and I know it seems counterintuitive to pass the expense of administrative program onto the benefactor of the unit, but that is where we're having the problem. We're having the problem with very, very small percentage of the people occupying the units and then abusing the program. If, if there's a way to not create a disincentive to us cities that are, through our prorata, through GMA requirements, through voluntary contributions, trying to create affordable housing units, but then being asked to pay more to police the, the affordable units, I would just implore you to explore all opportunities for that. And then I would also look at, can you create some tools and some incentives for whistleblowers to help you find those abusers at the lowest cost? So for instance, if you were to create a tool that would allow somebody to search and find an Arch or affordable housing unit so that they knew that there were certain rules that should be abide-by if they suspected some sort of non-compliance, those types of things. Because what I don't want to do is I don't want to be asked in the fall to bear 100% of the cost of non-compliance when there might be a, a way to pass a portion of that back to the people that are kind of causing the non-compliance.
Yeah, I think there's certainly a range of levels of oversight and compliance. And I think, you know, the consultant's still kind of developing their report, but general impression is Arch has been on one end of the range of level of intensity of staffing of that effort. I think, you know, there's obviously a point of diminishing returns where, you know, you have a lot of staff and the benefit that you get from that kind of, there's, it kind of levels off. So monitoring occupancy is a good example of that. There are some programs that every year have contact with every owner and require response, you know, a, a level of documentation and response. I think we're probably going to fall more in the category of some kind of rotation where every so many years we have contact, but we also kind of supplement that with some additional methods. And again, this is subject to kind of discussion by our board of what's, what's the right way to balance those things. But I don't think we're talking about going all the way to the other end of the extreme where we're trying to be in people's lives every day, but just sort of trying to find the right balance. And to your point about finding ways for the program to be more sustainable on its own, that's certainly something that we as staff would like to see as well. I think we, we had a kind of high-level recommendation last fall that as new programs are created, you know, we, we strongly recommend that cities include the authorization to collect those fees within the agreements that we then help you administer. Some, some codes have done that and, but a lot have not. The ownership program is one where I think we will probably have some opportunities to include new fees in the future, but it's going to take us some time to ramp that up. And we do have some kind of legal work to do to confirm that we have the ability to do that.
And, and so the follow-up to that would be, and conversely, if there's things that we need to add to our municipal code to support the enforcement side of this, especially if it's something that might be a criminal-type punishment for non-compliance, you know, I assume that you would let us know that as well.
Yeah.
Council, any final questions? Because we do, we are charged with some decision-making with regard to this briefing tonight. Any, any, I don't want to say final questions because we appreciate you remaining here for just a few more minutes, but seeing none. So the request or the recommendation from staff is that, of course, we receive the briefing, but also that we provide direction to staff on, as to whether or not we place the Arch budget and work plan on consent or regular business for the May 21 agenda. That May 21 agenda is just two weeks away. So any thoughts from council members? Benson?
You know, I think there's probably still a number of questions that the council has regarding the amount of contribution to the trust fund. So I would think that it's probably more appropriate to put this on our regular business as opposed to consent.
Yeah, I'd agree with Benson.
Okay, I see Lisa nodding, Wendy. Okay, great. All right. So I think then direction to staff is we will have it come back as part of regular business as opposed to consent. So I, I want to thank you for coming. Clearly, you know, you've had a rather intense beginning to your tenure as the new executive director, and your willingness to come before us is much appreciated and the frankness, I think, or at least I hope what you're seeing from us is a willingness to support and help you in some of your challenges and those compliance efforts. So please, please see us as, as a party in, in supporting your work and your efforts. So also, I want to thank Allison, of course, for coming up, and Evan, our, our planning director. They provided, for the public, they provided some great background as to why affordable housing is important to Mercer Island, particularly in the context of GMA. And to the extent that anybody's interested, I would encourage you to read that. It's, it's a good primer. So with that, thank you so much. And council, I think we'll go ahead and take, just, we'll take a six-minute break if, you know, five-minute break. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out sometime between seven and 7:10 so that we can go ahead and just get the room a little bit more reset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, I think we're going to go ahead and reconvene. Okay, we, Benson, apologies. We're missing Dave and Wendy. All right, they'll be here. Okay.
So thank you and welcome back. We have just concluded a study session on Agenda Bill 5558, Arch Operations and Management. So for that, we, we thank city staff and we thank Arch for coming forward. Next on our agenda, as approved, is the city manager's report. And for that, I welcome city manager Julie Underwood.
Good evening, council. I just want to note that tonight marks city attorney Carrie Sands' last council meeting as our city attorney. She will be joining the municipal practice group at Ogden Murphy Wallace, a multi-specialty law firm in downtown Seattle, which represents numerous cities throughout the Puget Sound region. In the four years that Carrie has served as our city attorney, she has made a significant difference. Some examples of her outstanding service include taking a proactive risk manager role throughout the city and as our delegate to the Washington City's Insurance Authority, making process improvements, especially with our contract routing and approval process, standardizing contracts, improving turnaround time, supporting departments through excellent customer service and responsiveness, litigating and settling the ST litigation with a successful outcome, taking over the public records program, and the list goes on and on and on. I'm so grateful that I had the opportunity to work with Carrie. I will miss her team spirit, her enthusiasm, her energy, her sense of humor, and I just hope you all join me in wishing her the best in her next career opportunity.
So Julie, if you don't mind, I'd actually like to give council the opportunity to say a few words. I think there's probably some people who would like to speak. I see Wendy reaching for the mic.
Carrie, 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 wow, it has been an honor to work with you and I am grateful for the time we had together. And thank you for everything you've done and everything you do. And you're going to be sorely missed, so good for them snagging you and I'm just glad to call you a friend now. So thank you.
Benson?
Carrie, certainly I appreciate it, your legal skills and your... Carrie, certainly I appreciate it, your legal skills and your, frankly, your ability to handle your client. And basically, herd the sheep, or herd the cats, sorry, herd the cats. But anyway, I really will miss you. I think you have, you've helped the city move forward, and I really appreciate it on a personal level, and I guess, since you're going to be downtown, maybe you and I can have lunch sometime.
Bruce?
Could we, could we go back one picture there? I, I too want to say just a big thank you to you for the work you've done, the professionalism you've brought. To make just a little bit more of Benson's point, I think you came into a challenging situation with an attorney on council who felt that he knew more than staff.
Wasn't me, wasn't me.
Didn't we have a council legal community?
And I think you, you did an awesome job of going toe-to-toe and making that job yours and making clear whose role was, you know, what each person's role was. So, congratulations to you on that. Looking at this picture, you know, everybody these days is running for president. That picture makes me think that maybe you should leave here and just go run for president because that's just, it's got that look about it, so. Good luck to you as you go forward, and I'm sure, I sure hope we haven't seen the last of you.
Dave?
Sure. Carrie, as you know, I just am super grateful for everything that you've done for the community. I think you have a job where it's, you do so much, and it's not, not always known by the community, and you have had to wrestle the scariest bears that come our way, whether it's, you know, claims against the city for all manner of things. I think we have some hobbyist litigators on the island that want to test you a little bit. I think you've had, you know, a couple of, Benson, I'm not letting you out of, there's a couple of attorneys on the council that give you a run for your money, but, you know, you've had to navigate some unbelievable parts of the law in some really intense situations. So, you know, what other practice could you have? You know, criminal law, you have property law, you have civil, like, everything that's in the portfolio, and you once said that that's what you liked so much about it. Well, if you really liked it, you should stay. But you've navigated us through some situations, some are known to the public and some are not, that have truly saved us, like financially, in some circumstances that I don't think we could have gotten through without your tremendous stewardship. So, just a deep appreciation for that. And the way that you handle all of this up here is amazing. It takes a tremendous amount of patience and levity and humor, and just incredibly grateful for everything that you've done.
Saleem?
You know, it's hard to follow that because I wrote it. He delivered it well. No, I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with you. I haven't had the benefit of working with you as long as these guys, and I didn't witness the sound transit negotiations with you, and I'm sure that that would take the toll on anybody. But thanks for the service and wish you the best.
Lisa?
Yeah, hi, Carrie. We're going to miss you. I only known you since December or January, but I have, I thought I knew how hard a city attorney worked, but I have a new respect for that role in terms of the generalist that you have to be and the amount of work and the late-night council meetings, which seem to happen way more often than twice a month, just for the record. But you will be missed, and your service to the city is very valued, and best of luck. I'm sure that we will continue to have contact with you in your new role, since we don't have a city attorney now.
Yes, I don't think the strings have necessarily been completely cut just yet. But we'll have to be more brief in our comments, and she'll be on the clock. But, you know, just a tremendous thanks. You have been the guardrails, you know, you have kept so much, you know, on track in the center of the road, right where it needed to be, and for that, you know, a personal and a professional thanks. You're probably one of the only people that I know that can recite city ordinance by number but from memory, which is just mind-blowing to me. Your sense of humor, and also, just for those of you who did not know, Carrie has challenged a couple of council members and staff to the occasional push-up contest, and quite often, she has shamed them. So, she is a woman of many, many talents, and you will, you will be missed. We have a, just a card of appreciation for you, but we wish you much luck and, of course, much success. Okay, Julie, back to you.
Thank you. Last month, YFS received a word that they actually received a $50,000 healthcare authority transformational enhancement grant. This grant will help fund implementing a trauma-informed care, TIA, approach at YFS and with school counselors, implementing in-service training in schools, and implementing information and training campaigns for other city departments where needed. It includes focus on some of our underserved populations, including recent Chinese and Korean immigrants and families, as well as the LGBTQ community. So, congratulations to YFS. And congratulations to Parks and Recreation. They were awarded a $20,000 grant from King County Councilmember Claudia Balducci's office. The Get Active/Stay Active Grant is a two-year grant awarded for organizations who provide youth and amateur sports and fitness programs in King County District 6. The goal is to help youth, adults, and seniors participate in physical activities that promote health and well-being. So, what's really cool is this $20,000 grant, $20,000 grant will be used to restore some of the youth and senior programs that we had to cut as a result of Prop 1, including preschool indoor playground, our specialized recreation, our adult senior age pickleball, batminton, and kendo. So, again, congratulations to our Parks and Rec Department for receiving that award. The city is currently leading a master planning process for the Aubrey Davis Park. The purpose of the master plan is to express a long-term vision for the park, trail, and open spaces. Many of you know, the park has been, been around since 1990. It's aging, and it's facing a number of challenges. You can help shape the future of this treasured community park by participating in the latest survey. That survey will be open until June 7. If you'd like to participate, visit letstalk.mersorgov.org/AubreyDavis to take the survey. You can also access project documents, participate in online discussions, and of course, communicate directly with city staff. You don't need to register to take the survey, just simply click on the arrow button, scroll down to begin the survey. We do want to remind everyone that these are just concepts for the park. Nothing's been decided. It's just really meant to spark your imagination and some of your ideas. So, we're collecting all of those now. The survey takes about 15 minutes to complete, and of course, all responses are anonymous.
Julie, can we go back?
Sure.
Because that slide has a big number on it.
What's the number?
$500,000.
Oh, yeah, this is, I didn't mean to miss that. Sorry about that. This was great. We just got word that the Aubrey Davis Park Trail Upgrade Project was funded by our legislature. It's in the capital budget. It was pushed through by our 41st delegation. It includes trail upgrades valued about $500,000. It will provide trail capacity as well as safety improvements. So, I want to thank, of course, our Parks Team, our city council, and our representatives at the 41st for helping get this across the finish line. Sorry about that. I skipped. Okay, skipping, skipping. Okay. The Puget Sound Regional Council was soliciting comments on their draft supplemental environmental impact statement, or the Draft SEIS, for PSRC's Vision 2050 Plan. The Vision 2050 will guide regional plans, management for growth in the central Puget Sound, and currently, the draft EIS looked at three approaches for distributing growth. One was termed Transit-Focused Growth, Staying the Course, and then Reset Urban Growth. So, the staff did submit comments by the deadline, the April 29 deadline, and of course, that is available, believe it's available on our Let's Talk page, if anyone would like to see that. We supported Staying the Course, and the Transit-Focused Growth Approach neglected, we believe, to address impacts resulting at a local level. Next steps will be following completion of the Draft SEIS. The PSRC will select a preferred alternative, and then they'll begin to draft a final SEIS, and we anticipate that PRC, PSRC will adopt a Vision 2050 in early 2020. As many of you know, this is all before then the community and the council goes through its comp plan update, which I believe will get kick-started in '21, I believe. Neighbors in Motion is hosting a first aid class on Saturday, June 1, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The location is the Mercer Island Fire Station, number 91, basically our downtown fire station. The cost is 30 to 35 per participant. It includes certification and a workbook. The class size is limited to about 20 participants, and so, of course, we encourage NIM supporters, cyclists, residents, anyone concerned about first aid or cycling to attend. So, if you'd like more information, please reach out to jeffkunz@msn.com for more information and to register. And that's all I have for my City Manager's Report, though I do have one final news-worthy item I'd like to share with the council and the staff and community. It is with heavy heart that I'm announcing my resignation as your city manager. My last day will be Friday, June 7. While I have served for nearly two and a half years, there is yet so much more work that needs to be done. The role of the city manager in this community is really calling for a style of management that is different from my leadership vision. I did not come to this decision lightly. When I thought about what's really important to me and why I'm a public servant, it's because I want to make a meaningful, positive difference. I believe the time has come for me to step aside, to take care of myself and my family, and to evaluate other ways for me to make a positive difference. I wanted to take a moment to thank each of you, every one of you, the current city council and those that served before you, including councilmembers Dan Grous and Jeff Sanderson, for giving me this wonderful, unique, special opportunity to take on this position and for providing me with their strong support, your strong support during my tenure. And there are just so many community members that deserve thanks. They welcomed and encouraged me, and I'm really grateful for their support. I also want to thank the awesome Mercer Island team of employees who are so dedicated to serving our community. They really made my job fun and enjoyable. And finally, I want to thank my family, especially my steady rock, my shade tree, my partner, Todd, who's in the audience. Thank you, Todd. I'm always, I've always believed in being all-in. There's no halfway in. I'm all-in when I'm serving a community in this special role. And so, that would not have been possible if I didn't have a husband who wasn't just as committed to Mercer Island as I was. And it gave me such joy when I told my kids, and especially seeing my little eight-year-old jump up and down when he learned that I was going to be home with him this summer. So, it was really, really special to see him excited about me spending some time with him. So, it has, while it has been an honor and a privilege to serve as your city manager, I really look forward to being self-promoted to citizen. So, thank you.
So, there's, there's no easy way to respond. I think we'll have time to respond, and I think it's with a heavy heart that we hear your words, but with deep appreciation for the service you've provided. So, counsel and public, the deputy mayor and I and the city staff will be meeting soon to talk about appointing an interim city manager. Our goal will be to name somebody before Julie's departure, which is June 7. We will bring back for the authorization to appoint or hire an interim at the May 21 or June 4 council meeting, and once an interim city manager is in place, we will work on the timeline for a permanent hire. And for those who remember the process that we went through that brought a city manager underwood, it is a long process. It is a process I would encourage everybody to approach with thought and, and deep consideration. So, with that, thank you. Again, we are in receipt of that resignation, and we will be following up with everyone with more information in the coming days and in the coming weeks. So, with that, we're going to go ahead and move on with the agenda, and the next item is actually appearances. And this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the city council on any item. When it's your turn to address council, please be sure to speak audibly into the podium microphone, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. The other is, please, you know, of course, be civil. There's more detail on the back wall if you need and/or are interested. We do have a public hearing tonight regarding the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, and there will be an opportunity to come before council with regard to the TIP at that time. So, that's later in the meeting. We understand that if you are short of time, need to get back home, you can speak to the TIP during public appearances, but if possible, we prefer that you hold off. So, with that, I think we do have a sign-in list, and Ally will be calling the names.
I have Eric Radman, George Whitman, and Lucia Perozzo-Rioli.
Before we do that, could I, could I offer just a, it's actually just a bit of humor. The picture that's up seems appropriate for the conversation that we've just had. This could be people giving CPR to all the council members who now are faced with the loss of the city manager.
Okay. Great, so, come on up. We have public appearances, and we, we come carrying something.
Sure, a little show and tell. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So, thank you. My name's Eric Radman. Do I have to give my address? Okay. In my mind, there are two events that can completely devastate this community. One is earthquake, and the other is fire. And I'm here to talk about fires, specifically major fires. I've talked to a number of you before about this issue, and I've tried in the past to convince the city council to ban fireworks sales to individuals here on the island. That was not very successful, but I'm still going to continue. In 2017, we saw some major fires in Southern California and in Oregon. There was lots of smoke here from the one in Oregon. That was the Eagle Creek Fire, started by 15-year-old that lit fireworks. I'm concerned specifically about fireworks, but I'm concerned about fireworks, but specifically about sparklers. This is what was sold last year at the Kiwanis Club. I'll show them to you. They burn very hot, 1,800 to 3,000 degrees Fahrenheit, and it just depends upon the chemicals that are used. The city allows safe and sane fireworks. These, in my opinion, are neither safe or sane, especially if you bundle them together, because then you've got some major pyrotechnics. No one checks what is being sold by the Kiwanis Club. The fire department does not, neither does the city. So, we hope that they are selling, quote, "safe and sane" fireworks, but we're not sure. We see on TV the damage caused by fires every summer in Paradise, California, in Southern California, last year in B.C. Lots of smoke was here. This is not only a public safety issue, but I also believe it's a liability issue for the city. If we had, if we lost 20, 30, 50 homes because of a major fire, it's dry, it's hot, a little bit of wind, I'm sure the city would be sued, would be named as a, in a lawsuit. So, we also have very steep hillsides here on East Mercer Way and West Mercer Way. If you get a fire up in those canopies, there is no way the fire department's going to be able to handle that. So, I would like the city, although I'd like the city to ban all fireworks, I'd like them to take a very small step and maybe just considering banning these sparklers that burn very hot. And I have some technical information on sparklers here, as well as kind of what happens when we get major fires caused by fireworks. If I can, may I pass them out to the city council? If I can may have passed them out to the city council, is that okay?
Excuse me, we'll give them to the clerk and she will go ahead then and pass them out to us. We do have the chief of police here, and I know that you're not the fire chief, but I do believe that there is a permitting process
Correct.
For what is sold at the Kiwanis.
That's correct, but nobody checks that. Nobody validates what's being sold.
We can follow that up. Okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Do I give this to whom?
Great. So, next up. Welcome.
George Whitman, Mercer Island resident, 9027 Southeast 37th Street. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I just want to put forth a positive viewpoint on the importance and uniqueness of, of the ARCH program that you guys were addressing earlier. And I want to, first of all, thank you guys all for your hard work in, in the city's endeavors and then your, also your efforts to try and audit the situation that's come up recently that was kind of dressed regarding the misappropriation of funds and, and various things. And I just want to reiterate that that is a very small portion of the overall good that ARCH has done over the last 10 to 15 years of its existence. And so, I just want to put forth positive vibes on that and that Mercer Island is an important component of our east side environment here. And I just urge you to, when you're deliberating, that you take into account our contribution as an important cog in the overall whole of how we treat our citizenry and less of fortunate citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up. Don't be shy. Welcome.
Hi. Lucia Pierzo Veroli, 4212 West Mercer Way, Mercer Island. I don't know how many of you drive into Seattle on a daily basis and see all those tents along I-90, but don't be fooled, that's just the tip of the iceberg. There are a lot, a lot of housing insecure members of our entire global community here in the Puget Sound. I want to encourage you to maintain your contribution to ARCH, not because I am passionate about providing for the housing insecure, although I do think housing should be a basic human right, not because the GMA requires every city to carry its fair share of affordable housing, which it does, but because it makes really good economic sense, especially in this time where we have shed fat or cutting into muscle to the bone. ARCH, for less than a full-time city of Mercer Island employee, takes on our responsibility to meet the GMA affordable housing requirement. It helps us develop, develop policy so that we can implement some on-island housing painlessly, such as drafting our ADU policy, which is sort of the poster child for ADUs in the region. I don't know how many of you have thought about an ADU, but an ADU can help a homeowner offset a, a mortgage payment. It, it helps that, helps us provide housing for bus drivers and caregivers who are enormous, who are of an enormous value to our community. And, let's see. Through seeding and then helping to manage units, ARCH provides housing for those who serve us on Mercer Island but can't afford to live here. Many people who commute to Mercer Island are within a reasonable commute because of ARCH, which is a big deal. There was a fellow at our meeting a couple of weeks ago who was talking about a carpenter who worked for him who couldn't afford a house for him and his family, and he finally found one out by Gold Bar. And then the first day after he'd moved in, he realized it took him two hours to get to work. So, you know, we rely on these service people for our well-being in this community. Mercer Island's contribution to ARCH is minimal compared to the benefit we reap. It comes to about $10 a household. Or a little over, two overpriced lattes served to you by an underpaid barista. Mercer Island's overall contribution, since it first joined ARCH 25 years ago, is less than the amount most others contribute in a year. I know there is a contingent of islanders who feel this is a frivolous use of a money or that it should go to a single institution like Mary's Place, but ARCH supports projects that places like Mary's Place do so they can focus on their mission while ARCH helps them implement them. Anyway, I hope you'll think this through carefully.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Ira Appleman, Mercer Island. So I found the ARCH presentation very unsatisfactory. I've been in the room for over 20 years where the former executive director told us, Arthur Sullivan, told us that they were monitoring this thing and monitoring compliance.
Clock on.
And
He's been in this room over 20 years. He knows it.
And it turned out that one of the news stations showed that they weren't doing that. The presentation, the new executive director, it sounded like the result of what they've done now. And they haven't taken any action in six months, as far as I can tell. They've just studied the problem and they're still studying the problem. But it looks like the only action they're going to take is increase the amount of money that they need, so hire more staff. Now, the, the people who really are somewhat offended by the ARCH thing say that if you just check the voters' list against ARCH's addresses of who was in the rental units or who owned the condos, you'd see that people were not living in the place where they said they were living. And that's all you had to do, just, just, and, and some people have done that on the island. They've just done that and found some names. So I, I do not want to get rid of ARCH. I mean, I think ARCH is important and it does, it does fulfill an important mission. But something has to happen as a result of this incompetence. And it looks like the only thing that's going to happen is that they're going to ask for more money. The other thing about the ARCH contribution that I don't like, and I was in the room when it was decided, really on the fly, to go from $25,000 a year, which we've been doing for a long time, to $50,000 a year, and then to $100,000 a year. And this is happening within the last two years. At the same time, you're asking for money and saying that the city's going to go broke or something. And I didn't like that. When, when you need money, then you say we're going broke, but then, on the other hand, you increase the contribution, you quadruple the contribution. It's a mismatch, and I, I don't think that that is reasonable. The other thing that was not mentioned by ARCH was that a lot of the problem with, with housing is the upzoning that's going on in this region, especially in Seattle. And so what happens is there are upzoning certain areas to provide profits for developers. And the result is that the affordable housing that is there is destroyed and it's, it's replaced by expensive upzoning condos. And the result is displacement of those people who you're trying to help with ARCH. So I would like the city council to take a strong, a strong position in the region that you shouldn't have upzoning that decreases affordable housing. And the way to do that is to require that the developers in the upzoned area replace the, with affordable housing, those units that they destroyed to create their units for richer tenants.
Thank you. Come on up. Welcome.
My name is, hi, welcome. My name is Matthew Goldbach. I live here on Mercer Island, and I promise to be incredibly brief. I just see in, in regular business that it's recommendations to suspend the rules of Procedure 6.3 for second reading as it relates to the year-end financial status. And I guess I'd just like to not see that happen or hear a good reason why it's happening. One. And two, did, was, was anything provided today on the transit interchange, as it says on the?
No, I'm
I didn't get it.
Nothing was provided. There would be no... Actually, Julie, I'm going to ask perhaps if you can address, we, we did approve the agenda as in front of us, which has item number six, "Continued Discussion on the Mercer Island Transit Interchange." And here it does say, "Information to be provided on or before 5/7."
Yeah, well, yeah, sorry, we weren't able to do that. Yeah. So tonight, we just have that item, and I think the council's really on task for talking really about process. So next steps to kind of get more information, to get, to help the council be more informed before they make a determination.
My understanding is that it was, staff was unclear what the direction from council was at the last meeting.
Okay.
So tonight we'll be revisiting what that direction is and getting clarity.
It's just continuation.
This is one of those times.
Yeah.
And we did send an email out yesterday explaining it. So if you're not on our list, we should get you on our list.
I've had that, I've had that problem, being off the list. And one other final, and I'm, I'm jumping into the public hearing and I'll just be very brief. I read the agenda, item, the agenda and packet, and I noticed there was nothing about East Mercer Way at the intersection of the J and the French American School, which, which since 2016, there's been a, a report that the city has that the LOS there a couple of times a day, every day, is an F, beyond the worst. And I'm surprised that there was no mention of that in the, in the TIP. I'll remain surprised. Okay, thank you.
Well, stay tuned.
Okay, we'll do it.
Stay tuned, yeah. Is there anyone else for public appearances? All right, seeing none, public appearances is closed. The next item of business is the consent calendar. Deputy Mayor Nice has requested that we remove AB 5562 Soil Remediation Appropriation Request, which we will move to the first item of regular business. So the revised consent calendar contains the following: payables, payroll, minutes from April 16, 2019, regular meeting, and AB 5557, 2019, arterial and residential street overlays. Is there a motion to approve consent as revised?
So moved.
Second.
First and second. And any discussion?
Well, I would like the opportunity to speak for 20 seconds to the arterial and residential street overlays. I can do that as a separate, pull it out, or however you'd like to handle it.
If you're just speaking to it or if you wanted to debate it in any way.
Don't want to debate it.
Then why don't you just go ahead and speak to it, please?
Do you want me to do that now?
Actually, now we're going to go ahead and take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Bruce?
I just want to shout out to staff on this. You know, this is one of those big pieces of work that gets done every year and that is essential work for our community. Clint and Ann, I think, are right at the core of this, along with some help from, from others, like Patrick on staff, I believe. And it is work that we all rely on for having our roads do what they're supposed to do. If I, as I looked at the engineer's estimate versus the bidding, they, they hit it pretty much right on the head with their engineering estimate as to where we were going to be. And therefore, the, the amount of work that's there to be done is the amount of work that they were able to figure out how to afford. So I just want to say thank you very much for your service. It's, it's greatly appreciated, and you do it year in and year out. We really appreciate it, and the public should too.
And ditto. I know that there's several of you here in the audience tonight. Thank you for your hard work, and I know you're getting into the busy construction season, so there's more goodness to come. So we have gone ahead and approved consent as revised. We now actually move on to public hearing, and that is well, actually, that comes, that's the first item of regular business. Right now, the public hearing actually is preceding, at least according to my script. The, okay, we have a difference between the two. Yep, no, I, I, right, but the way I have it is that the public hearing is preceding the regular business, so.
That's what, I specifically put it after the public hearing, so.
Great, okay. So we're going to move forward with the public hearing then, which is Agenda Bill 5556 and 2020-2025 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. So this public hearing is for the purpose of receiving comments on the 2020 to 2025 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan Program, otherwise known as the TIP. This public hearing is now open as of 7:44 p.m. Public comments will now be received. And those wishing to provide public testimony, please approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have a list of people signed up?
Roberta Lewandowski, Kirk Griffin, Trevor Reed, and Jim Stanton. If you guys could stand up and queue up, that would be great.
You're so welcome.
Hello, I'm Roberta Lewandowski. I've lived on Mercer Island since 1979. I was 10 at the time. But I want to say that thank you for the opportunity to comment on this. I really like the device that staff had provided where we can see a map and then see what people said about that spot on Mercer Island. That was really informative. The Mercer Island has made a lot of improvements in the 40 years I've lived here. When the downtown city center was just a mess, you could already walk from Luther Burbank to the city center. When you got there, it wasn't very nice. And the first transportation or walking improvements they suggested for the downtown city center, Mercer Island, the planning director was hooted out of the room, really. And so it wasn't until 10 years later, we started to make it pedestrian-friendly downtown. And Island Crossway has been largely fixed. I mean, it's not as nice as I'd like, but there's, it's usually safe passage. So we, we do support Neighbors in Motion's proposal that we, the highest priority should be to finish the north-south bikeway routes and allow people to get to either the route to downtown by bike or to the transit center to take advantage of the new light rail system. But in addition to that, we think it's very important to complete an update of the
Well, we're taking a five-minute break. Nope. It's unfrozen. Because we have a big Costco bag in the freezer. Testing, testing.
Okay, council, I think we, if you can hear me, that means we're back on. That's what got him eating again.
Okay. I think we're ready to go again, so please continue. We were, I think we were just over, but go for it.
Oh, it's a sign, yes. We think it's, Island Vision thinks it's very important to complete the north-south bicycle, the update, the bike pedestrian plan. It's on your unfunded TIP list. And I know you talked about it maybe a year or two ago and the mood of the council then was, we don't need to plan stuff, let's just build stuff. Which I understand that. But I think that when you look at how much we're spending on parking stalls downtown, according to the plan for the sound transit settlement money, some of that could, a little part of that could be doing a new updated plan, which would be much more functional for both bikes and pedestrians. And when I'm talking to Neighbors in Motion and they're telling me, oh, 86th is great, 86th from Island Crest Way to 42nd, and I'm saying, I'm walking on 86th, it's not great. It's open ditch, there's a transit stop. I don't see anybody in a wheelchair could get to the bus on that, on that street. Saying that that needs a lot of pedestrian improvements, even though it's probably safe for a very good biker because it's a slow street. So that's, that kind of thing, a bike pedestrian plan update, can't address what's the best we can do every time we do a new improvement. So, thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Kirk Griffin from 7845 Southeast 73rd Place on Mercer Island. I've been of residence since 1975. I'm a member of Neighbors in Motion, and we really appreciate the long time that our screen was up here showing our first aid class. We got some extra free publicity for that. I'm here just to urge you on behalf of Neighbors in Motion for the four things Neighbors in Motion have been involved in for the past 10 years or so on Mercer Island. Completing the east-west Mercer shoulder sections, paving the inside sections of those, completing the north-south bike route, increasing the availability of kids to be able to bike to and from school, as well as working on the Aubrey Davis Park and the Aubrey Davis Plan. Specifically for the TIP, I want to urge you to fund the north-south bike route and the one missing link that we have on Island Crest Way for roughly one mile from 90th to either 62nd or maybe all the way down to 68th where the QFC is. Last year, or maybe it was 2017, I guess it was, we were able to finish the other main missing link of that route, which was along northeast 40th with some help from money from the state and so on and so forth. That was a nice missing link that was pretty much filled in last year. The missing link now is on Island Crest Way. Our vision is that someday, 10-year-old kids could bike from Lakewood to town center and feel like they're safe. Right now, it's not safe. If you go along Island Crest Way, you don't want to bike along there unless you're an experienced biker. Now, Neighbors in Motion, all of our, we have kids who have all been raised on the island. As far as we know, we have no grandkids, so it's not like grassing for our own, you know, our own kids. We think it'd be a good thing for the community and for the island generally. It would certainly enhance the mobility issue in terms of getting to and from the parking ride, but it also makes the island itself a much more hospitable neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I just have, kind of, there's two...
Can you give us your name, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Trevor Reed and I live at 8210 Southeast 65th Street. And I'm here to comment on the plan. And if possible, I'd just like to give the, it's an overview, just to you guys...
If you could give it to the city clerk and... Thank you.
I just wanted to talk about the Transportation Improvement Plan and ways we can improve it. I'm a transportation planner and I think it's really important, building on the Bike Master Plan, that the city adopt the newest and best standards, which would be all ages, all abilities, that provides safe bicycle infrastructure to everyone, especially in school zones and in the downtown core. There's incredible potential to increase connectivity to the new Linklight Rail Station and it would be to everyone's benefit. The rightaways are too large there. You can safely operate motor vehicles in 10 to 10 and a half foot lane width. And there's so much development going on currently. And I signed the plan that 80th and 79th are currently due for a fairly significant rebuild. And when you're building curbs and roadway, it's a 50-year investment and it's a marginal cost to really create a safe piece of infrastructure. Not to mention, it's a safety concern. Last year was the deadliest year for pedestrians in American history. There were 6,500 pedestrian-related fatalities. And it's due to larger vehicles and especially with the increased pedestrian and bicycle traffic going to and from link, it's really critical that we get that infrastructure right. Not to be callous, but a human life is scored at $10 million, according to the EPA, and it doesn't take many accidents to really get a return on that investment. You're talking $500,000, $1 million, and you will be saving lives by doing such an investment. Furthermore, creating these really great pieces of infrastructure, you can combine them with stormwater runoff treatment and it really opens up a lot of opportunities and avenues for different pots and money when it comes to funding because it becomes not only an accessibility issue, there's a proven correlation between economic growth and development and access pedestrians and bike lanes, as well as an environmental issue where you're getting that stormwater treatment. So if you do this planning right, you get a holistic facility, it delivers benefits that are so much larger than the cost. And just in relation to the Tully's parking lot, it's really critical that the access isn't on 27th Street. There's new funding resources, part of the public benefits associated with giving up Sunset Boulevard should look into improved pedestrian and bike investments, too. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
My name's Jim Stanton. I live at 7812 Southeast 78th Street on Mercer Island. I've lived here since 1985. If you go on Next Door, I don't encourage it, but if you go, you'll see, there was a woman who was talking about her experience with e-bikes and that it, she could, had found that with an e-bike, she could run all sorts of errands and didn't need to leave the car, didn't need her car and was touting it. And there was a generally favorable interest. But you didn't have to go down very far before you saw that a woman saying, you know, I would love to have an e-bike, but I live on the south end and it's just too dangerous. There's no safe way to get to the north end. And she's right, and I hear that all the time. I hear it in my own house. I hear it, that comment about it's, you can't move around this island safely on a bike. We hear it when we go to schools and we talk about, we show them bike maps and so on. We'll be at Island Park tomorrow for their Bike to School Day. And we talk to parents and they say, you know, we don't want our kids to ride because we don't think it's safe. In the middle school, if kids live on the east side of the island, on about half the island, there's no safe way for them to ride a bike to the middle school. And it's that missing link right in the middle. And I'd like to, we would like to encourage you to moving up the priority to addressing that so that that is filled in, that we have a safe north-south route before 2023 when the light rail comes in. Because then it's a really opportunity. We connect all the schools, we provide a, we can reduce the van for parking places at the north end, we can reduce the amount of cars in front of the schools, and we can make it safe to run errands and so on on the island. But that missing link is a real problem. Island Vision is right, we need higher standards and I think a study for that's appropriate. But we've had two bicycle studies now on the island that have identified that we need a safe north-south route. We know that, and I think we should just go ahead and address it. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for the public hearing? Any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, the public portion of this hearing is now closed as of 8:01 PM. Next, we have our community planning and engagement team. I think we have Patrick here? Patrick, well? Patrick? That's what I've been told to say. I'm hoping that jives with what you guys are expecting.
Good evening, council members. For the record, I'm Patrick Yamashita, you're a city engineer. I was just wondering if you were going to talk about the soil remediation first?
No, we're going to go ahead and complete this item and then we'll move into what is considered regular business.
The agenda bill before you is AB 5556. It's the draft Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. And I've got about 13 slides related, directly related to the TIP and then I'm going to hand off to Kirsten and she's going to talk a little bit about sound transit mitigation and sort of a second discussion about goals and criteria for selecting projects. But first, I want to cover the TIP portion. And half of my slides are really providing some background. It's covering a lot of the routine things in the TIP. It's partly for the sake of newer council members, but primarily for the benefit of the audience that's sitting here and any audience members that may be watching online tonight or in the future. As you know, the TIP is updated every year by July 1st and that's required by RCW. Most of the funding comes from real estate excise tax. I think it's about 65% of the funding for the TIP. There is a little bit of gas tax and more recently, the Transportation Benefit District or License Tab fee of $20 per vehicle and traffic impact fees that have been in effect for a couple of years now. From time to time, we also get grants. And there are no, there typically are no contributions from the general fund. And as we look at the six-year planning period for the TIP or Transportation Improvement Program, our goal is to maintain a positive fund balance throughout that whole six-year period, but we also want to look beyond the six years because sometimes, like this year, we have some large design projects in year six. What you're not seeing in the TIP is year seven, where there are large construction dollars. So we want to make sure that there's enough balance in year six to start to support year seven projects. The TIP includes a couple of big bucket types of projects. The first is preservation projects. Those are projects that maintain our existing facilities, our existing residential streets and our arterial streets and paths. And then the other category would be new facilities, primarily new paths, new roadway shoulders such as on East and West Mercer Way. Also, new projects from time to time related to capacity on our roadways, like traffic signals in the town center or a traffic signal on southeast 40th several years ago, or roadway widening to add lanes. And I just wanted to mention that the TIP is dynamic. It changes from year to year. Needs and issues change and you get a chance to update the TIP every year. So whatever you adopt this year, if you change your mind or if you want to do something else next year, you can do that. Quick overview of the TIP. This is going to be a high-level presentation. The agenda bill itself is about 32 pages. I'm not going to cover 32 pages. There's also seven exhibits. There's lots of good and important, helpful information in the agenda bill, but I'm not going to repeat all of those things. I'm going to cover briefly the program elements, talk briefly about our public engagement process. I want to highlight some notable projects and then hand off again to Kirsten to continue the discussion about goals and criteria for selecting projects from the Sound Transit Settlement Funds. Again, lots of details. The seven exhibits cover a variety of things. First, Exhibit 1 is covering lots of financial information. It talks about real estate excise tax and our other funding sources. Exhibit 2 summarizes our public comments that we gained, gleaned mostly from Let's Talk on the website. And then 3 is the project list and street fund balance. That's typically what we call the TIP. It's the spreadsheet with all the projects. On Exhibit number 4 is a detailed list or description of all the projects in the TIP. Then 5 is a project map. It's colored by year and it's a nice graphical representation of the projects and where they're located. And then Exhibit number 6 is another map. I provided that last year as well, but we've updated it slightly since last year. It shows all the roadway, roadside shoulders on the Mercer Ways, both what has been completed, any sidewalks or paths that are on that route. And then, in a different color, we're showing those areas that are gaps where there are no shoulders yet. And I'll touch on that a little bit longer later in my presentation. And then number 7, again, the draft goals and criteria for the Sound Transit Settlement Funds. Also in the agenda bill are some new projects that are described and some small changes in the TIP. Most of the TIP is status quo, except that we have added year 2025. That's the sixth year of the TIP and so we're showing projects in that out year. The TIP priorities are established in both the comprehensive plan and the CIP budget policies. It prioritizes or focuses on reinvestment over constructing new facilities. That makes sense, I think. If you own a house, you want to make sure that you are maintaining what you have before you spend money on adding on to your house or doing something else like that. I wanted to mention, as most of you know, TIP funds are very limited, mostly funded by REIT. You may recall that in the budget process last year, you made a decision to slightly reduce the REIT allocation from 50% to 45% to this REIT fund and increasing the allocation from 50% to 55% to support parks and building projects. The $20 vehicle license tab fee and the traffic impact fees have helped to supplement the street fund, but that's only been in the last couple of years, but it really has supported a lot of newer projects. And then again, grants don't come very often. Part of the reason is that Mercer Island is a small city with very modest traffic volumes compared to other larger cities and we have a relatively few accidents or collisions. But we do have some... But we do have some grant opportunities primarily focused on pedestrian-related projects like safe routes to school. Speaking of the Transportation Benefit District, it typically generates about $375,000 a year since 2016. But Initiative 976 could change that. It's going to appear on the ballot this year. And if it's approved, it will repeal city authority to use the TBD as a revenue source. And so when you multiply that 6 over the six-year period of the TIP, that's about $2.25 million, about 10% of our TIP.
So just to clarify, in the numbers we have in front of us, we are assuming it does not pass and we retain the ability to continue collecting?
That's correct. We try to assume no change in things unless we know that something has changed. Moving on to public engagement, our public comment period was 30 days. It was from March 15th to April 15th. We advertised on the city website. We posted on Let's Talk. We advertised several times in the MI Weekly and then published a notice or two in the MI Reporter. Again, Exhibit 2 shows a summary of the comments. And as in the last several years, most of the comments were related to pedestrian and bicycle facilities. I've been here about 20 years. I remember in my first five years, there was no mention of new pedestrian and bicycle facilities. It was all about roads. But times have changed. I think demographics and interests have changed. And I think we collectively want to help support that change because it's important. So some of those comments are related to completion of the north-south bike route, as you've heard tonight in the public hearing, completion of the Mercer Way shoulders sooner than later. Although this wasn't specifically a comment in the public comment period, we have heard and received complaints about the chip seal on East Mercer Way this last summer. A lot of the bicycle community has complained about how there's been loose rock. The ride has not been very smooth and it hasn't been very pleasant for bike riders. I do want to mention that the next chip seal on the Mercer Ways is not until 2021. And so you don't have to make a decision on whether or not to chip seal on the Mercer Ways tonight. What I suggest is that you have staff schedule a study session for the first quarter of next year. We'll do a pavement maintenance 101, kind of a roadways 101. And what we want to do is talk about the different preservation and resurfacing strategies, why we use them, when we use them, how we use them, how we use our pavement condition ratings as a tool to help us know what to do where. And so our expert Clint Morris is going to be leading that. And as you know, he's been here for a long time and he's paved a lot of roads. So the program elements, there are two major categories again, preservation and new construction. Under preservation, the first category is residential streets. We have about 58 miles of residential streets. Most of our streets on Mercer Island are residential. And the cycle of maintaining these, these roadways is about 35 years. Some roadways a little bit sooner, some longer. Then Category B is town center streets. And then Category C arterial streets. We have about 26 miles of arterials. You'll notice that the cycle is shorter for arterial streets. And that's because we have a greater traffic volume on those roads every day. So the roadways wear out sooner. Category D, new pedestrian and bicycle facilities. And then Category E, which was created last year in the TIP. That's the East Link Traffic Safety Mitigation category. And then on page 6 of the agenda bill, we list some unfunded projects. It's basically a parking lot list of projects that didn't quite make the cut yet, and we don't want to forget about them. So moving on to a few notable projects. First, the Mercer Way Shoulder Project. Exhibit 4 is the project description exhibit. Page 24 describes the Mercer, I'm sorry, the Mercer Way Shoulders. And then page 22 describes the Town Center Sidewalk Replacement Project on both 78th and 80th Avenues. That's the project that you folks added to the TIP last year. And then finally, the North-South Bike Route, another project that you added to the TIP last year, further described on page 24 and 25. So Mercer Way Shoulders, if you look at Exhibit 6, it's this map that you see on the screen. And the colors might show better on, on your printed copy. Anything that is colored in green or orange are facilities that have already been constructed. Green represents the paved roadside shoulders. Orange designate either sidewalks or paths. Now, if you look at the bottom of the page or the south end of the island, you'll see a couple of stretches where it's red. Those are areas where we don't have any roadside shoulders yet. And so those are the segments that are programmed in the TIP for improvement. Historically, since 2002, we've paved roadside shoulders about every other year, at least once per biennium. There have been a couple of times when we've done back-to-back years. The focus historically has been mostly on East Mercer Way, partly because we have, have roadside shoulders on much of West Mercer Way already. The other reason is that on, if you look at East Mercer Way, it's much windier, much, many more curves. It historically has been a bit narrower, too. And so by adding shoulders on East Mercer Way, it just opens up that roadway and gives people a, kind of a safer feel because there's more space within that roadway cross-section. So the majority of the shoulders are complete. Three of the four remaining sections are in your TIP in the even years, 2020, 2022, and 2024. And then the final segment would be in 2026. And that would be at the very south tip of the island.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Is your mic on?
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Patrick, as we look at the Mercer Ways and the shoulder improvements there, they tend to all be on island side, whereas the water side is tougher because of the slope. Was there ever an anticipation that cyclists would use that same island side shoulder going both ways? Or is it always thought of as a one-way passage?
It was always thought of as a one-way pathway because it's narrower and you're trying to follow the rules of the road. So you want to be on the right side as you travel around.
So if you're heading, if you're heading whichever direction, you're on the water side, you're just at the mercy of the road itself?
Town Center Sidewalk Replacement Pilot Project, as I mentioned, it was added last year. We don't have any changes to the proposals for the 78th and 80th. But I did want to just highlight this really quickly to get down to the next steps. As you know, 78th and 80th, those streets were not part of the Town Center Street Improvements back in the mid 1990s. So they didn't get new asphalt, new curbs, new sidewalks, street trees, or benches, or anything else. The sidewalks are very narrow. They're lifted by mature street trees. If you look at the photo up here, the top one, that sidewalk is narrow. You see some asphalt shims because the sidewalk has been lifted. Over the years, Public Works staff has ground down those areas to try to reduce the abruptness. But there's only so much we can do on these existing sidewalks as they continue to be heaved. Additionally, many of the trees are not in the best of shape. Even though they might look green, in this particular case, that lower photo shows a bunch of bark that's been peeled off. And that's one of the indications of poor health. What I said to you last year in the TIP process about these projects is that Public Works was going to be doing a tree assessment for the whole town center area. And we would bring back that information to you to help you understand part of our approach to redoing the sidewalks and replacing street trees on 78th and 80th. That we wouldn't just take everything out, but we would look at the health of the trees and try to retain trees that are of high value and high quality where we can. So that's under the next steps.
Clarifying question?
Yeah, you know, with respect to the trees, are you, what's the criteria you're looking for? Trying to maintain native trees or trees that have a high degree of resilience given climate change? Or is that just part of the things that you're going to consider?
I think the first step is to just look at the general health. Is it healthy? Is it diseased? Is it declining? What kind of life does it have left?
So assuming it has to be replaced, what's the criteria for selecting the replacement?
I would suggest we get into that and that also let our Parks Director address that question when it comes up.
Okay.
Great.
So the next steps are related to when you will see anything related to this project come back to you before we go out to bid. The first one would be after the completion of the ADA Transition Plan later this year, plus the tree health condition assessment. We'll present that information in the context of this project. And then also present the preliminary design for council review. Last year, the council expressed a lot of interest in not having us go all the way ahead without having a check-in point. So we wanted to make sure that we listened and we follow up. Then finally, the North-South Bike Route on Island Crest Way. This project, the scope really has not changed. It was added to the TIP last year. The phases that were approved last year were the very beginning stages. It's looking at alternatives, analyzing the alternatives and starting the public engagement process. And so that was programmed for 2019 and 2020. Council directed us to fund those phases with Sound Transit Mitigation Funds. As you know, if you've driven through this area, it's, it's nice. But when you think about a construction project, it's very challenging, depending on the scope. It's easy to say, sure, we'll create a new north-south bike route by painting charros, low impact. If we do anything beyond that, lots of impact to lots and lots of impact. There are trees in the median area, trees along the sides, the roadways relatively narrow. We could have, we could create bike lanes and curb and gutter. We could have new nice sidewalks outside of the roadway cross-section. We could have a wide shared path. Different people would probably say yes to different things. So we want to have a robust public engagement process to understand what the public wants and also understand what the council wants and can support. And the challenge, though, one of the challenges is everything costs money. Everything always costs money. And it takes time. So the reason that last year we didn't propose an estimated cost for physical design and construction is today, we don't know the actual scope of the project. But these first two phases will help us be more informed about what you want in the end. And then we can proceed with the design and construction.
Patrick, are there any utilities on Island Crest Way that need to be upgraded anytime in the next decade?
I don't know for sure. But that's always something that we are doing before major projects, if it's like a major roadway construction project. We have our major water transmission line that runs down Island Crest Way.
Might be interesting to look at any opportunity for synchronicity.
I think that's one of the basic principles.
Yeah, so there's actually a couple of projects in the TIP where we're shifting the timeframe a little bit to accommodate or do some utility work ahead of time. And the benefit of having a very, very small engineering staff is that we like to talk to each other. So Clint, the street engineer, sits right next to the water engineer. Clint, the street engineer, also works on drainage. Clint, the street engineer, sits very close to Ann Tenella Howe, who works on PBF, works on sewer projects, and does lots of other things. My comment taken. Thank you. And that's it with my formal part of the TIP presentation. And I just want to hand off to Kirsten, unless you want to talk about TIP right now and ask questions. And then we can move on to Kirsten's part. Your choice.
I think it would be helpful if we had Kirsten go ahead because I believe she's going to be speaking about the, is it the Sound Transit Guiding Principles? Because that will help us understand what funds are available from what pots of money. Unless there's any objections from council, I would suggest we go ahead and have Kirsten.
All right. Thank you. Excuse me, for the record, Kirsten Taylor, Senior Project Manager. And tonight, we're going to have a guided discussion with the council about the goals and criteria, is what we're calling them now, the guiding principles for selecting projects and programs using Sound Transit Settlement Funds. Eight years seems like an adequate length of time to spend settlement funds. But given the, the length of lead time to plan and implement projects, council is being asked to review the goals and criteria for selecting projects and programs and the expenditure timeline for developing projects utilizing the settlement funds so that staff can return with proposed projects that best meet the goals and priorities of the city council and the community. So tonight, I'll ask you to confirm the goals that we discussed at the planning session back in early February. We got feedback from council and I believe that the goals reflect that feedback. But I'll want you to confirm that or correct that. And then we will look at and ask council to provide feedback on the criteria. This is the first time that you will see the criteria in this format. They were presented, but we didn't have really time at the planning session to delve into the criteria to see if they met the interests of the council. And then we'll just discuss and affirm the timeline, just so that you've got a sense. Staff feels a real sense of urgency, you know, like we have no time left. Again, eight, eight years is a lot of time and we do have time to get these projects. But we want to stay really cognizant of the timeline to get the projects done and get reimbursement from the Sound Transit Settlement Funds. And then finally, the next steps. We plan to, if council wishes, to come to the mid-year planning session to discuss projects based on the criteria and goals of council, potential.
Can you explain then how that fits in with what we're doing tonight and going through the tip? If you're only bringing us the Sound Transit Settlement Fund projects in June, but we have to go through the tip tonight?
So there is one project that you've not already approved that is being proposed. And that is addressing the intersection of 77th and Sunset Highway. So that is proposed for this TIP. And then the other projects that, that staff discussed preliminarily last year, they would like to come to council once or twice, depending on the council appetite for discussing those projects over this year. And then they would come back with more definite proposals for the 2020 TIP.
Okay, so then we would, so in essence, we start more in-depth work on the Sound Transit Funds for approval in the TIP next year?
Yes. But we want to set the stage so that the projects that come to council are projects that meet your criteria and goals. So the goals from the council. You, you did provide feedback and we changed the goals as presented, first presented to council at the planning session. But the goals that the council directed staff were to, one goal, the first goal is to mitigate the loss of access from closure of the center roadway. The second, to improve access to transit and maximize the largest number of residents using transit. Three, improve vehicular circulation as well as pedestrian and bicycle safety near the light rail station. And finally, to leverage partnerships to share costs and resources and use settlement funds effectively. So my first question is, do council have any questions, concerns? Or is council ready to affirm, give a thumbs up on these goals?
I think council, just for the sake of jogging some memories, because it was several months ago, that if I recall correctly, a lot of these goals were developed based out of the principles as articulated in the Sound Transit Settlement Agreement. It wasn't a blank piece of paper where we all sat down and developed them. But there was a great deal of context and historic conversation that preceded this. So these represent, and I would assume then are consistent with that Sound Transit Settlement Agreement and then the more specific conversations we had in January. So with that as a little bit of framing, any comments, questions regarding these goals? I would assume we don't need to wordsmith them. I think have we captured the essence of, you know, the vast majority of our intent? Again, we can always come back, but if we're feeling comfortable that we, we're generally in the, in the right direction, I think. in the right direction, I think we're good to go on to the next step.
Overarching goals. All right. So then the criteria categories. We created four categories. One are general criteria, a second pedestrian, bicycle, vehicular improvement criteria. We have an on-time, on-budget criteria, because we do have a deadline to be, to spend and be reimbursed for funds. And then finally, we were addressing the council goals of sustainability and innovation as another set of criteria to filter any potential projects through. So the details of these criteria categories, you can find on Exhibit 7, page 30 of the Agenda Bill. But I want to show you, it's a little hard to read, which is why I wanted to refer you to your Agenda Bills. But we, I asked the city engineers to help me put the projects that have already been approved by council through these, the filter of this criteria. So the projects commuter parking, the ride-share and bike-share pilot projects, the four, five, and six projects are projects that you already approved last year in the TIP, the speed feedback signage near West Mercer Way Elementary, the north side, south bike route on Island Crest Way, the phases one and two, the planning and public engagement or community engagement pieces of that, and then the I-90 trail crossing at West Mercer Way. Again, those are projects that you already approved last year. And then also, we added the seventh proposed project, which is the I-90 trail crossing at the intersection of Sunset Highway and 77th. And so this, again, it's too hard for you perhaps to read all of the criteria details, but when we filtered all of those projects through the criteria, you can see the boxes that are in dark gray, those are the ones that fit the criteria. So this is the sort of process that we would go through with these criteria with any projects that we bring forward to council to propose to council for consideration and approval.
I would just again emphasize that, or hope to emphasize, I'm going to look to our city attorney for this, insofar as this criteria would then be consistent with the Sound Transit Settlement Agreement, ensuring that we would be reimbursed for expenditures.
They would be consistent. It's really the council's internal decision how to decide how to spend the money. So, you know, we're already two years into the period. It's amazing, but it's nearly been two years since the negotiations concluded, and we had a tentative agreement, which was then approved in about October of 2017. So this is just an effort to try to create consistent focus, consistent with the settlement agreement about how to spend the funds.
Great. Thank you. Sure.
Just a process question. So these are projects that have already been approved?
Projects one through six have been approved by council, and seventh is proposed through the, this year's TIP.
Okay. And I guess, I'm just trying to...
Is your...
I'm sorry. Yeah, is there a certain number of boxes that need to be checked off before? I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea. I mean, there's some that are, you know, have a lot of white boxes and some that are, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what...
Well, no, we realize that not every project is going to fit every criteria, but we would want to make sure that the projects do hit a, you know, a number of criteria. We didn't, we didn't make it mathematical. There are 20 different criteria, and, you know, we would think that they would need to meet, I don't know what percent. If council has, you know, if council has, you know, a wish about that, we can certainly look at that. But it really was making sure that we've got a process in place to filter any projects, to really look at, do they meet the criteria, the goals and criteria of the council?
I mean, I would encourage us to look at this, because I think what you did is you took existing projects, plus one we anticipate talking about tonight. It was sort of a test run against the criteria.
It was a test run, yes.
It's a test run, and I think, you know, in our own minds, we've all probably gravitated towards those white boxes or clusters of white boxes and thought, hmm. So I would say let's use this for, as a tool at this point, and certainly one that we'd likely be coming back to again in, later in June, and then in the coming year.
Yes. And if council is ready to provide input on the criteria, of course, we've drafted criteria that we think, that we heard from council, that we think meet, of course, the settlement agreement goals and our community interests. And I've got, I do have the criteria. I can bring them up a category at a time, if you would like to spend the time going through and reading those. Or if you want to provide general, if you're prepared to just say what you like, what you would like general changes to, I'm also open to that.
I'm going to suggest council, for the sake of time, that we focus on the delta. So what you like or what you don't like, what you want more of or what you want less, rather than go through sort of a, an exhaustive conversation. Fortunately, we've had this packet for some time, so I think if there's, again, let's focus on things that you want to see different than are here right now.
So just clarifying question. Is this chart in our paper packet?
So the chart is not, but the project criteria are Agenda Bill 55, 56, Exhibit 7, page 30.
Right. I've got that. Okay, so it's just really, it's just hard to see.
It is. That's why I wanted to refer you to your packet.
Will you send us a copy of that?
I will.
Okay.
I think Lisa, did you have any further questions? Wendy, I saw you also leaning toward your mic.
I just want to be crystal clear that we're doing this whole process in framework, and we're definitely going to get the money back reimbursed. This will, this will meet Sound Transit's criteria as well, so they'll pay us back when we do these projects, right?
We will already have sorted the, any possible projects to meet the settlement agreement requirements.
So we're in good communications there, so there will be no surprises at the end of this.
Yes. And we have, we've confirmed with different projects, like the north-south bike route Island Crest Way, that if we just did the phases one and two and didn't build the project, would we still be able to get reimbursement? And they confirmed in writing that yes, we would. So we are checking on those things. If there's any questions whatsoever about whether they would reimburse, we'll get advance confirmation of that.
The good news is I see our city attorney nodding.
Correct. Kirsten captured the point I was going to make, which is that we are having a lot of check-ins with Sound Transit staff along the way to make sure that they do concur with our decisions about what is eligible for reimbursement versus what is not.
Great. Bruce?
Actually, I'm going to hold. I think we're still in questions, and I'm a little more at statements than questions, so.
Okay. Dave?
Kirsten, can you just clarify, on ride-share and bike-share, I thought of those as pilots that are sort of...
Those were first-last-mile pilot projects, but they were projects that we were reimbursed for the, you know, out of our first-last-mile bucket from Sound Transit.
I understand that, but they won't be ongoing projects.
No. No.
So these are past, present, and future?
Yes.
The ghosts of...
Yes.
Lisa?
Yeah, thanks. I guess somebody just observed that we're all looking at the white spaces, not the gray spaces. And the one that kind of jumps out at me is Line C under the second set of criteria.
The pedestrian bicycle and vehicle improvements?
Uh, no. Well, yes. So, yeah, but does the project improve traffic flow from changed traffic patterns post I-90 Center roadway closure?
Yes.
And I see that there's only one project that tags that box and, or appears to be only one. And I was wondering, are there, are there other projects that were under consideration that tagged that box that were not considered due to other reasons? Because it just seems like that is so, that's a piece of criteria that's so integrally tied to the settlement dollars, it would be nice if we had more projects that addressed that.
Well, and this is where I might get some help from the engineers, but following the closure of the center roadway, one of the first expenditures that council approved was funding to, to study the traffic conditions post-center roadway closure and using that data to, to look at where, you know, if there were projects that needed to be forwarded to council because of road conditions, intersection conditions due to the closure of the center roadway. And I believe that following that data, and there was extensive, there's public process around that, you know, that drove the next set of priorities coming to council.
I think I would clarify that this is the initial list, and some of the history behind this was the question of, we have roughly $10 million. The buckets are interchangeable. And, you know, how much do we want to be spending on hard infrastructure? How much do we want to be spending on future-oriented projects? How much of it do we want to spend on car-driven or PED or bicycle, et cetera? And what we realized is rather than taking something of a time-specific approach, meaning this year there was sufficient council interest in Project A, that we would try to establish criteria and both to help us manage as a council now, but also so future councils would have something to work from. The extent to which there are projects listed here at this time does not, at least to my understanding, represent all projects for the totality of the $10 million. There could be additional projects that come up. But again, this is based on, I think the phrase that was used when we went out to the public and we had that engineering was the low-hanging fruit, the points of immediate pain or concern, particularly around safety. So that's, that's my memory. And I'm, fortunately, again, seeing our city manager nodding.
Yeah. And you might recall, I mean, the initial pain points were really accessing east, you know, I-90 at East Mercer Way and West Mercer Way, and of course, going through our town centers since we lost access to the HOV. So, and unfortunately, a lot of those projects really required us to work with WashDOT. It wasn't something that we could control, but fortunately, WashDOT has been really cooperative in working with us on addressing those things. You might recall there was, I want to say, is it the entrance at 76? There was, I think it was originally a general-purpose lane plus an HOV, and they changed that to both general-purpose lanes, again, to try to really address the fact that we were seeing the traffic patterns filter out in different ways across our northern end to access I-90. So I felt like those pain points were actually addressed. So you're seeing now, I think, some, some things being proposed that are really non-vehicular-centered and probably a lot more PED and cycle-centered, and, and so you're not just trying to address the movements of vehicles, but now you're starting to see, okay, let's address moving bicycles and people on feet there. And also, I mean, obviously, we wanted to carve out, the best category I could come up with was sustainability and innovation, but I know there's a lot of interest among the council and among the community of, are there other innovative ways, you know, the autonomous vehicle, other ride-share programs that we could tap into that, again, can help bring our residents to transit? So you're kind of seeing, hopefully, criteria not just devoted to moving vehicles, but more about just moving people to transit, so.
And to add on to what Julie said, the FEIS required mitigations, and those mitigations have improved the, the traffic flow following the closure of the center roadway. And if they had not improved that, then staff would be coming to council with proposals for those improvements. But I think at this time, the data shows that the improvements have done what they were intended to do, to, to improve the traffic flows.
Okay. Bruce?
I'm going to go ahead and launch here, because it feels like we're at a point where...
Well, right now, what we're trying to do is to make sure that people are generally comfortable with the criteria. And so I just want to make sure I'm not hearing any major concerns. Again, it's not closed out completely, but if, if council is comfortable with both what we're calling the goals and the project criteria, at least in their general pattern, let's go ahead and...
And we don't, we don't have to finalize those today. We can have another conversation. Again, this is the first time that council is seeing these in this format, and so it would be great if we do have any kind of immediate feedback, if there's, you know, we can take that and work with it. If council would also like to spend a little more time with the criteria, we can come back and do that. Again, our intent is to spend the rest of this year finalizing the criteria and being prepared, you know, to bring projects to you and showing you those filtered through the criteria so that we can have proposed projects in the next, the 2020 TIP.
Okay. Great. So Bruce, launch.
Yeah, thank you. So I appreciate, I a little bit feel like Sisyphus on this, because I've been pushing a rock up a hill and not getting too far with everyone, but I appreciate there's a little bit of progress here, and I want to call that out and then talk about maybe trying again to go further. So I'm, I'm on the draft version here, page 29 of the Agenda Bill, Exhibit 7. And I note up at the top, the very title of it is Goals and Criteria for Selecting Projects and Programs. And Programs was the part that we, we argued over, if you will recall, at the planning session. I suggested we needed to think beyond just putting concrete on the ground. We need to think about having programs, something that gave us the ability to think about having service rather than just concrete. And if I then, so I appreciate that that's in the title. Unfortunately, once I get down to the first, I get background, but then I get project goals, not project and program goals. So it's been lost by the time we get there. And I, so I'd suggest that if there is a buy-in to this being about programs, let's get it into both there and at the top of the second page. It should be project and program criteria.
So using that consistently throughout?
Exactly.
Because it says proposed projects several places.
Yeah. And the thinking here remains largely project-driven thinking, and that's where I'd like to try and go a little bit further, and I'll explain why. Because I buy into, at the bottom of, of page 29, the four goals as, as laid out here. And I think, I think I didn't hear any object from, from the council as to that. But if you then just look at them for a minute, you take the first one and the fourth one, and I would say that kind of regardless of what we do, we're either meeting or not meeting those. They're a bit neither here nor there as to most of the things we're talking about at this point. But number two is improve access to transit and maximize the largest number of residents using transit. And I quickly begin to think, if I just scrap everything else and say that's the goal, I am going to be very quickly wanting to look at transportation methods for people getting there, whether it be bicycles or scooters or Uber or Lyft or a shuttle bus or something else that gets us away from spending $80,000 or whatever it is for a parking spot and gets us to moving people from home to transit in ways that are innovative and maybe are autonomous vehicles or maybe are other things. It's programs. And so that's where I'm driven, within the scope of what's here within these goals, to want to talk about things that are not projects or not concrete going onto the ground. And that in turn takes me over to this page. And to be clear, when I get to this page, what I look at is, and I see, you know, traffic slash safety enhancements, 5.1 million. That's the money that was initially conceived to deal with these horrendous backups that we thought might be occurring as a result of the closure of the center lanes, right? And the, and the, all the cars that are going to be going in all these other directions. And as Kirsten's pointed out, you know, we've been very fortunate in dodging that bullet for the most part. The changes that were made as part of the settlement, the lights on North Mercer The, the changes that were made as part of the settlement, the lights on North Mercer Way and traffic redirections that people have done, you know, as they say, you know, it's like water, it flows to the easiest route, has largely provided us with this, this opportunity to not have to have 5.1 million going into some sort of mitigation like that. And, and so then I think back to goal two, I want to get most people to transit. And I know I've got the, the flexibility to move things between buckets. And so what I want to do is move it from there into the last mile solutions bucket to the greatest extent that I can. And in doing that, at the same time, I recognize that it, it's not going to happen, uh, programs won't happen, uh, they won't be useful if they happen really quickly. Uh, they need to extend over time. And so then I run up against the, the 2025 deadline to get this done. And I say to myself, I want to move it to the other bucket and I want to talk about not having that deadline applied to it. That's what I'd like to see this council wrestling with is not, um, I, I, I don't want to take away from a list of projects. A list of projects is important. I just don't want us to put our focus on to a list of projects and say, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to get done by 2025, uh, it'll be concrete on the ground, all dollars spent 2025, thank you very much. I think we will have missed a golden opportunity here. And that's, that's the argument I made before, you know, it didn't have, I didn't have these things as the beginnings of framework for it, and so I appreciate that this is here. But that is what I'm trying to, uh, propose to, to this council, that we somehow construct this a bit more around this idea of allowing the possibility of programs, allowing the possibility of dollars being spent over a longer period of time and not be, uh, concrete-driven.
So I think to help with this conversation, I'm going to go to the expenditure timeline slide. Um, I'd like to-
I want to, before we dive into specific projects, I, I get the sense that there's some council reaction to, to that feedback.
Sure.
So I, I saw Benson and I think also Wendy.
Yeah, Bruce, I mean, I remember this discussion. And so, I, you know, and I, I get your point, but I think there was also the reality that we didn't want to go back to sound transit to try to extend that 2025 deadline. And that's what you're proposing to do. Um, I, you know, so I, if that's, has to be done, I'm sort of, um, voicing my opposition to, to going there just because I'm concerned about opening up a can of worms. So, um, but I think your point's well taken in terms of trying to be innovative and trying to push hard now for programs, but I am concerned about going back to sound transit.
Okay, I'm going to let Wendy go, please.
So I, I'm trying to imagine what those programs would be and what they look like. Is it an app you're talking about? Is it an autonomous vehicle? So until I have a little more clarity around what this program is, I'm certainly not interested in going past 2025, but I would be interested in hearing what you think is coming in a timeframe that works. I like the idea of concrete and projects because as we heard from one of our residents tonight, those projects have a 70-year shelf life, right? Like this, the concrete we pour, the safe line bike routes we put in, those are here to stay for a lot longer than 2025. So for me, concrete outlasts 2025. So unless you got a compelling program, I want to see projects done, I want to get that money spent because I know the design element and the cost of that concrete is astronomical.
So I know our city manager was approached about an autonomous vehicle pilot, but I don't know more about it than that. So if you wanted to speak to it, we could. I know that Metro and Sound Transit have recently launched a combination app and shuttle bus. So if you're in the Rainier Valley area, you can, uh, call up a ride and get to a light rail station, um, within a few minutes. Uh, on the other hand, I know that the app that Metro did around East Gate died for lack of, um, uh, the shuttle bus company being successful. So it's formative days for this stuff. And I wouldn't suggest that I, uh, have any silver bullet by any means, which is part of why short time, I, I think doesn't work well for this. This is an evolving area. Uh, and point well taken that, that, um, that, you know, concrete lasts a long time. Uh, Benson, to your point, I, I guess I don't share the same concern, but I, I know I'm rehashing a car argument we've had before about risk of approaching sound transit and saying, we would like to have extended time. I, I don't see a scenario where, I, I see a scenario where they say, no, but I don't see a scenario where they say, no, and the fact that you asked leads us to do something punitive to you. So I'm left with, why not ask? Why not make a pitch? I, I just don't see a downside risk in that. If you do, I'd, I'd be curious to hear it. I, I could understand that they might say no, and I, I, I would appreciate that that, that's a possibility and that that might keep us from going anywhere on it, but I don't see a possibility that they actually sort of, uh, back out of the whole contract in some way with that.
Um, I'm going to try to also pull from my memories of, of the conversation, which, you know, while it wasn't stated, one of the sort of de facto guiding principles that I left with was we, without having a specific program that we wanted to pursue, we did not want to go back to sound transit and just entertain the conversation about, is there a scenario under which we could extend the access to or validity of the funds? I, I do remember council going there. So we would need to ask council if there's the desire, the interest to reopen that, if that's the direction that we were going to head. The, the other pieces, you know, I, I'm taking your words as being, um, chosen to, I think, to illustrate a point, which is, you said, concrete and projects will be done in 2025. I think there are a number of things in here that aren't just concrete. You know, I see there's a lot of study about those bike ped, uh, infrastructure and arguably programs that we could be looking at. I'm also recalling, uh, the potential that we may need in terms of retaining, uh, the 630 or contributing to 630 as we go into new negotiations. So I don't think it's an absolute, um, but unless I'm hearing from council a desire to, to go back to sound transit without having a specific program, um, I would say, you know, it's never, it's never forbidden to bring it back, but I would say, let's limit the amount of time we spend on it this evening. That said, I see Dave leaning in.
Pushing my button. Um, yeah, I think you make a great point, which is, I think our highest priority is to identify the highest impact projects that we can for the money that we have and begin to line those up for execution as soon as possible. I've sort of stated a few times, my greatest fear is that we get to the end of the clock and we haven't spent our money and we're sort of out of luck. But at the same time, I think, I, you know, Bruce has an interesting point, which is, I think there would be, there probably is appetite, I don't know, that was conjecture. There could be appetite on the sound, on, uh, sound transit side. If you came with a, such a compelling project that you say, this is incredibly impactful and meaningful to us and it solves a myriad of problems, but we can't get it done in the amount of time that we're allotted and we'd like 24 more months. That's very different from sort of communicating, well, we haven't really gotten our act together, so could we have more time? That I think is sort of falls flat. The other thing that I think we need to consider is, uh, you know, there, there are sort of two paths here that, that we can use, that we can use money for. And I think the durability of the solution that we, we construct is probably, is probably paramount. But secondly, we do have an opportunity to do a bit of experimentation where you, you know, if people can't get to the train from the south side, let's figure out how to solve that problem. I don't think they're going to be riding bikes in November, but they would take, uh, you know, a regularly scheduled bus or, or we, you know, as, as the mayor said, help fund the, the bus route for a more frequent basis. So I think there's sort of experimentation that people say, gosh, that bus all the time really makes my life easier. And that money lasts till 2027, great. Uh, then we, then citizens can continue to fund it there. So you have sort of this, this Rubik's Cube that you can figure out one side, but then the other sides fall apart. But I think durability, ultra-high impact in the time that we have left, and then there is a chance for some, um, some experimentation to get that higher impact.
Saleem.
So I think I understand what you're saying, and I think I get why you can't define what the program would be because the program doesn't exist. And I think I understand that the best way to do it would be to release, let's say, $5 million to Mercer Island, to put in an endowment, to earn interest off and then pay for a program out of the endowment. Like that would be kind of an ideal situation where they, they just release the bucket of funds without the requirement to, to build something to be reimbursed against. Is that reasonable?
Uh, that would be ideal. I mean, I'm sure we're going to spend a bunch of that bucket on projects. I don't, I don't by any means see us taking that whole bunch and spending it only on programs, but I'm trying to keep, I'm trying to envision at least some of it going to programs, not 100%.
But what I'm hearing is the, the sense that you want a sustainable funding source for ongoing programs for first-class mile.
Ideally.
And you would need a big bucket of money for that, reasonably big bucket of money to make it sustainable.
Yeah, I mean, call it, call it a minimum of a million or something, but two would be good.
Yeah, I mean, depending on the intensity of the program. So then the question, next question would be, you know, how far will you go to get that? You know, you, you have to negotiate for that. That's a pretty big ask. That's not just going necessarily, you could go to Sound Transit and ask for it, but would you be willing to, to really negotiate for that?
I, I'm going to encourage, as I'm Senior City Attorney, ready to weigh in, and I think she might provide some enlightenment.
I'm not sure how much enlightenment. I just want to say in terms of this endowment concept, you know, I'm not aware that it's been tested. I don't know that there's any precedent for it. I also don't know, um, how realistic and how much traction it would get with Sound Transit. Recall that originally, all of our funds were going to be subject to federal requirements, which were literally reams and reams of paper of federal requirements. They tried to alleviate that burden by identifying another source of money that wasn't tied to the federal requirements. That said, I am not aware of the alternative funding source that they identified and what other strings might be attached to that in terms of timing, in terms of them wanting to close their books, if you will, on this liability that is outstanding to the city of Mercer Island, the amount of $10 million, $50,000, right? So it's a, it's a big liability that's just hanging out there for them. And so this concept of endowment, while it's intriguing, you know, we have not discussed that or floated that with, um, Sound Transit staff, so we don't really know, um, whether it would be viable or not.
All due respect, I, I'm using it as an example to gauge his, uh, willingness to negotiate in a more earnest way as opposed to just ask. So let's just call that an example.
Sure.
And, you know, to you-
It's a fair example, though. Um, let me, let me offer a couple of, of further thoughts on this. One, I, I hear this sort of, whoa, Sound Transit, or may think that's crazy. Sound Transit today is engaged in this last mile solution project in the Rainier Valley together with Metro, and they're dumping a bunch of money into it. They are very, uh, dedicated to this idea of how do we get people to our trains? How do we get people to our buses? It matters to them. So, and, and we have, uh, according to folks I've talked to at Metro, now developed a reputation as a sort of hot testbed for last mile solutions. Between what we did with the bikes and what we did with the Lyft Uber, those were programs that Metro said, wow, you guys got those done in short order, uh, with limited structural hassle that we've gone through. We like that and would like to see you do more. That's what led to city manager being approached about the autonomous vehicle possibility. So, and, and so what I'll offer is, I, I know most of these people on the Sound Transit board. I would very much like the opportunity to go and have quiet, over a cup of coffee conversations with them to test at the board level whether there is an appetite for this. It's not something I want to do, uh, sideways with this council, but it's something that I think, that was, that's the place where the, at the end of the day, a decision would be made, not at the staff level. And it's, it's a conversation I would like the opportunity to have if there was council support for it.
Yeah, hold on.
Just a quick question, is how long do you need to do that? I'd-
Couple of weeks to go and tap, you know, a few influential people and see what their appetite is.
Benson.
Okay, so, I mean, in, given the time that we, I mean, it's nine o'clock now. I mean, I guess, um, first of all, as far as our criteria and the goals, I don't see if, I don't see, Bruce, what you're talking about, I don't see it precluded with what we have in front of us, okay? And so, and you may want to wordsmith it a little bit, but you know, frankly, you know, I think we were being asked, just to sort of get a, a general direction, do we sort of approve the goals and prove the criteria? I didn't hear any pushback either from you or from anybody, so maybe we can get that out of the way.
I think we already did.
Okay, so then the, well, good, because, but we've sort of now talked more about it, I guess. In terms of, I, I just recollect that, uh, our city attorney had some concerns when this proposal was raised earlier. I guess in terms of you going forward and sort of just having this informal conversation, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I guess, you know, um, it, yeah, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but I guess I'd be wary in terms of, um, going in there and not having a, kind of a pretty solid idea of what you're proposing or suggesting that they consider. Uh, but obviously you're, you know, are you looking for, I'm speaking on behalf of the council or am I just speaking on behalf of council member Bruce Bassett?
I, I would be floating an idea and in no way saying the council supported me on this, but strictly that I'm trying to get my council there and I'm only going to get my council there if Sound Transit Board seems to be there. That would be the way I would-
Then I have no problem with you having that discussion.
Okay, so I, I'm going to speak then as myself. I, I'm going to go back to, without having a sense of what the program or programs are, even the parameters of, I am not comfortable having you or anyone approach the Sound Transit Board at this time. Um, and I say that, I, I think conceptually, I'm with you. I'm definitely there. Without having more of a shape and a form to it where we can articulate, any of us can go and articulate to any of those board members with confidence that this is something that we would be interested in, um, I, I can't see doing that. The other thing too is we obviously haven't taken public input. The other thing too is, you know, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to remind council that we, after May 10th, do not have a city attorney on staff. And I would like us to be very deliberative in work that we explore that might require a substantive understanding of both Sound Transit and that settlement agreement so that we take those steps with, with caution and good advice. So at this point, without having more, more program definition and what specifically you want to go to the board with, I'm, I'm not comfortable going there. Saleem? Wendy?
So I'll, I'll support it, and I'll support it because I think that this will be a big reduction in staff work. If, if we can get them to, uh, agree in, in to those terms, to release a certain amount or, I don't know, all of the bucket of money for us to use for programs, uh, without the constraint of the timeline, uh, that to me is a huge benefit. The, the public process, the engagement, uh, I'm not married to any of that. The public wasn't involved in the negotiation with Sound Transit. This was done-
Yeah, they were.
Not in the settlement agreement in earnest in this way. And these buckets of money and how it was fungible, this was kind of designed, uh, by the council, and I think that this is giving them more options.
I have to step in and disagree with that. I have to say that the buckets were defined through a robust public process where the different buckets were very clear. And I can remember they came from public forums, online feedback, et cetera. So I want to make sure that it's really understood, that the construct of that settlement agreement came from a robust, public dialogue.
Okay, so I, I'm just supporting giving the public more options, so I'll let you have a coffee.
Wendy?
I, you know people, you know things, yes, please go have conversations, go figure out what project, programs might be worth doing. I'm not in favor extending to 20, beyond 2025 unless you have really something clear and tangible and actionable. But yes, please, go talk to elected officials, go talk to the private sector, go talk to the city of Bellevue, they're doing a ton of stuff. So get as much information as you can and bring it back and let's see what we can pilot.
Are you comfortable having him speak as himself or on behalf of the council?
Um, I think it's pretty clear we're not unanimous here. So go speak as yourself and you have influence, you know people, and we're a smart, hopefully, group of people that can figure it out if you bring us something back that we can act on in the next couple- on in the next couple of years.
I could. What I would be suggesting to them is not a change from option A to option B of what is in the, in the settlement agreement, but an expansion of our possibilities. So I'm not in any way suggesting that the money, for instance, be definitively moved from this bucket to this bucket, not to be returned.
We can move it anyway.
Yeah, I'm suggesting that a greater flexibility be provided to us. If the council chooses to do it in the future, and if it doesn't choose to do it, build the concrete, that's fine.
Lisa?
Yeah, I, I'm not in favor of having Bruce go and speak on behalf of council, but, you know, certainly, it's a free country, and you know people, and if you want to talk to them. I feel like the settlement agreement, which I was not a part of, does constrain the city in many ways. If you can kind of loosen some of those tethers on the use of the money and the timing without us giving up anything in return, that would be fantastic.
Dave, anything?
Yeah, I think it's just a, it's an exploratory fact-finding mission to see if there's a, if something's possible, and I see nothing wrong with that.
I think we're, then, just to reiterate, and I would just, I'm comfortable with you speaking as an individual, and not on behalf of council, and certainly, at this point, not with the expectation that it brings in any conversations regarding renegotiating, and I use that word quite intentionally, renegotiating that Sound Transit settlement agreement before conversation would happen, not only with council, but with the public, with the public and our, obviously, our legal.
I want to thank you all for your indulging me on this. I know we've taken a lot of time, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate the flexibility to go and have some coffee. So, and I'll be speaking for myself, and I'll be not talking about renegotiating, but can there be an expanded flexibility? Thank you.
Super. Okay, Kirsten, back to the regularly scheduled program.
So I would, I would like council to look at the expenditure timeline that we put together, just because I think it, it provides this total eight-year look at projects and funding and how staff is thinking, so that council knows when we are pushing for projects, kind of what our thinking is behind that. You will see the arrows at the top, so in mid-2019, that's where we are today, we negotiated the settlement agreement the second quarter of 2017. It was approved in its finality by the Sound Transit Board and City Council the fourth quarter of 2017. Immediately, staff began working on the long-term parking as one of the highest priorities, if not the highest priority of the community, with the goal of having the long-term parking in place by the time Sound Transit or the Light Rail, East Link, is operational. So if you look at the green arrow at the end of 2023, that is the, the go-live date, the last go-live date in 2023 with Light Rail. So that is one of the, the factors that we're thinking of with projects, because we have heard we want long-term commuter parking in place by that time. We've also, we're looking at projects that should, you know, which projects really address current needs affected by the loss of center, access to the center roadway, or anticipated changes around the Light Rail station. Again, keeping in mind that 2023 date, so you'll hear staff referring to that. And then the red arrow is just the, the date that the settlement agreement says that we have to apply for reimbursement for all the funds by December 31st of 2025. So until we have some other agreement in place, that's how we'll be focusing our thinking.
And just to clarify, that services rendered, projects or programs completed, we cannot bill in advance for work that we would be doing in subsequent years.
They, they, yes, you are correct. So the blue line is the long-term parking. You know, we're looking at a six-year timeline to achieve commuter parking. The green is the traffic mitigation safety work. And I'd like to, you know, we've got some projects that are already in place, starting in 2019 with planning, with implementation. Again, you've approved some projects that will be planning, you know, planned this year, designed this year, and implemented next year. And then we want to look at how many projects and what kind of a timeline our engineering staff can do these projects. The projects have, bigger projects, engineering projects, have about a three-year timeline. You know, in year one, it's the concept, the preliminary design. Year two, you're doing the, the final design, the bidding, that sort of thing. In the third year, you're actually constructing it. And these projects also will be competing with other street projects, other engineering projects, and we do have limited staff. So the idea and the goal is that any projects that council would like to approve, that, that we're planning now to stagger those out. And we do think that the last projects need to be in, need to be approved by council by 2023 in order for us to actually get them constructed. And I think that goes, that goes the same for the orange color, salmon-colored, which are last-mile solution projects. We were fortunate that we were able to get that rideshare program going in about four to five months, which was, you know, kind of a tremendous effort and accomplishment to be able to do that. Many project concepts could take, you know, six months, a year, or two years for a, another pilot program. You know, we have ongoing conversations with Metro to pursue what we hope are interesting potential pilot projects to be able to bring back to council. And, but some of those are going to take a while to get the concept fleshed out, to get council direction, if you're interested in pursuing those and being able to implement them. So we may be able to do one, two, or three more pilot projects, but they would need to be staggered, and some of them might take longer to implement. So we do want council to keep in mind that, again, our thinking is, we have to have everything kind of planned out by 2023 to be able to accomplish it by the end of the, the settlement agreement time period. And we will continue to bring projects back with this in mind, and we would, it would be helpful for the engineers in the group, in the room, to be able to plan, of course, as they do for the TIP, six years, eight years. You know, projects are just as real, and they're thinking in year six as they are in year one or two. So that will be how we're bringing project concepts and, and proposals back to council.
So then, just to reiterate, over the course of the next 12 months, essentially, we will see projects taking these goals, these criterias, come back to council as, as staff envisions, and, and I mean that in a positive way. And then, the extent to which decisions need to be made for this initial round, they would arguably be appearing, surfacing in next year's TIP.
Yes.
And that, that doesn't mean that they would start in next year, they would not necessarily start in 2021, but they would land on the calendar.
Yes.
Okay, great. Is there anything else that we need to go through with regard to Sound Transit now? Or should we move on to the, the, the general conversation about the TIP?
I think if council's ready, we've got, if, again, if council, council's agreed with the goals and broadly with the criteria, I would like to know if there's any interest or need to bring those back another time, or if we're okay with that discussion, then we will come back and initiate project description or actual project, potential projects for council to start considering at our next agenda item on this.
Okay. I'm not seeing any objection in this.
I'm just going to remind that I'd ask that the word project get replaced by project and program down through the body of this. I, I think that was, there was general agreement with that earlier.
There was.
We'll do that when we bring this back with the projects.
Okay.
Are there any projects we're doing in the next year?
I think we'll see that in the TIP.
Okay.
Yeah. Sound, you mean Sound Transit-funded projects?
Yeah, yeah. And this year, again, I would ask our engineers if you wanted to, to get information about what they're doing this year, because the, the project and the funding that is approved this year is not showing up in the, the TIP that you are looking at for 2020 through 2025.
I thought we had, we have a section in here, section E, it's called East Link Traffic Safety Mitigation Projects on the spreadsheet.
Go ahead.
With money for 2020. So, Anne Tenella Howe, your Assistant City Engineer. So specific to the East Link projects, this year, 2019, we are underway to design and install the speed feedback signs near West Mercer Elementary. Also, in the design, preliminary designing process this year, is the work at the Ped Bike Facility, I-90 Trail Crossing at West Mercer Way. That is in your capital improvement plan, funded for design 2019, construction in 2020. So then the only, so those are the, really, the two projects, concrete on the ground that are underway right now. Also discussed last year and in your capital improvement plan is the north-south bike route on Island Crest Way. That's a, that, as Kirsten mentioned, or Patrick mentioned, that's really more alternative evaluation and identification and kind of sort of that kickoff of, and public engagement. We have not started that process yet, but that is funded for, or identified for funding 2019 and into 2020. Okay, so looking to staff to carry us on to the next steps.
I feel like a teacher. Things to remember. The council reviews and updates the TIP every year. I say this every year. You get to revisit issues and projects every year. You can change your mind, you can do a do-over, over and over and over, if you feel the need in any year. You held the public hearing tonight. We're looking for feedback from you this evening, and then adoption is scheduled for June 4th. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm here with a cast of characters as well, our street engineer, our Assistant City Engineer, Finance Director, Public Works Director.
Seeing no mayor, I will jump in for the moment. I, I want to offer a, a thank you to staff around the north-south bike route, stepping, steps that you have proposed. None of the rest of the council, except to the extent that I've mentioned it, was with us when we had the previous conversation about how to solve this and go potentially through the park, and you developed or had an outside consultant look at that. So it's, it's a topic that's been around, probably was around long before that, too, but at least it was around in my time then. I didn't really appreciate until you proposed it, this idea of there needing to be a public process, but as soon as I saw that within your plan, I said, you know, that's, that's exactly the right thing to have happen here, because this is an area that impacts a lot of people. And a lot of people who are pedestrians, a lot of people are cyclists, a lot of people who are drivers, and having a robust public input process, I think is exactly the right thing there. So kudos to you for, for getting out of the box we put ourselves into, thinking it was a kind of a minor design and do, and thinking, no, it needs to be bigger. I think that's the right, that's the right process and kind of the right timing, and so I support that.
Okay, so you, all right, okay, I was wondering if there was, okay, so I had missed something else in addition. All right, Benson.
So are you looking for comments on specific projects, or where are we at this point?
Well, that's, I think, the question for staff. Do, what I, what I would suggest then, council, you know, many of us have had many years to become familiar with this list as it, as it cycles through, that rather than have a conversation about each and every line, that again, we start at the top and just the extent to which there's questions about any particular project or program, that we query staff and/or have any discussion. So.
May I interject for a moment?
Yeah, please.
One thing that might be helpful is if you look at the status column, you'll see which ones, which projects are identified either as a modified project or a new project. All the other ones remain the same.
Okay, great. So he's made the list even shorter if we so choose to take that, what I would call shorter, shorter route. So council, starting with section A, Residential Streets Preservation Program, anything in there that, any questions, concerns? Again, keeping in mind, this is the first time we're going through this, I believe it comes back to council again June 4th. Okay. The next section that we have is Town Center Street Improvements. We know, I know we had some presentation on that, particularly on the sidewalk elements. Lisa?
Thanks. So just to be clear, the 78th Avenue sidewalk from 32nd to 34th, that's the stretch along Mercerdale?
Yes, it is.
And it's both sides of the street?
Most of the focus, at least at first blush for us, is on the east side. If you ever drive by and look at that section, it's really, really narrow, and much of the sidewalk is heaved, and it is not a good place for people to walk.
So you're not necessarily talking about taking out sidewalks or trees on the Mercerdale side of the street?
Part of our consideration is going to be the tree assessment and what that finds related to the trees on both sides of the street.
And I, I mean, I guess it doesn't start until 2021. I just, I know that.
So we'll, I'm sorry to interject.
Residents, no, that's okay.
We will have some lessons learned in terms of what we do, how we do it, and the cost associated with it, as we go through the process for designing and constructing 80th. Then we'll take those lessons learned and apply them to 78th, and we'll have a better sense for construction costs.
Okay, and on 80th, is the focus also on the east side of the street?
It, the focus is on both sides, I believe, on 80th, but primarily on the east side again. If you recall the photo that I showed on that slide, the sidewalk is elevated from the roadway, there's a planter strip with trees between the narrow sidewalk and the street, and that sidewalk is narrow and it's heaved, and we want to make a wider sidewalk to make it easier for people to walk, take out the trees that are heaving the sidewalk, remove any trees that are diseased or dying or just not appropriate, and then replant them in a manner where they have more room to grow. One technology is called suspended pavement, where there is more space under the sidewalk and adjacent to the sidewalk where the roots of the trees can grow and the trees thrive. And then the other thing is that we'd be choosing trees that are sidewalk-friendly.
I just, you know, I know how residents feel about losing the character of the tall canopy trees, and I just hope that that community sentiment, which is, like I said, very well-known and no secret, is taken into consideration in terms of how quickly trees are removed, which ones, if any, can be preserved, and what the replacements are.
Yes.
Okay, great. Aerial Street Improvements, there's two here, arterials. I clearly need a little more of my protein bar. The arterial street improvements, there's, there's two on here, one showing modified, one showing new. The modified is Southeast 40th from 76th to 78th, and the new being North Mercer Way, which is 8,400 to Southeast 35th. And again, emphasizing, though, that that is in the out year of 2025. So, Benson.
So, Patrick, I guess one comment I have, this is really on Project C6 and Project D3, and, you know, during your presentation, you talked about the, you know, you contrasted the West Mercer Way with East Mercer Way. And so I'm just wondering why, or is it possible to switch these years between these particular projects? So D3, which is on East Mercer Way, gets taken care of at least one year ahead of what you have on your TIP?
So, just so I understand, are you suggesting that D3? So, just so I understand, are you suggesting that D3 be moved from 2022 to 2021?
Well, yeah, whatever the year, yes, yes, I am. I was just curious, because again, if we're trying to focus on trying to address the safety issues along East Mercer Way, the question is whether or not we can switch those two years, because I'm more familiar with West Mercer Way, because that's the road I drive on, and, you know, I'm thinking that between the two, that one can probably be delayed a year, but I'm not an engineer, so.
So these are...
I'm also seeing Jason.
Jason, Public Works Director, my suggestion for tonight would be, if there's interest from the council to do that, let us go back and explore, let us look at the data in terms of what can be done, and look at our timing for things, and then we can come back to it June 4th with, here's staff's recommendation on whether or not we can move those projects around or not, but I would encourage our engineers the opportunity to go back and look at the data for those roads before we make a decision tonight. So if there is council appetite for that, we can certainly look at that between now and June 4th.
What I also was going to mention is that these are two different types of projects, and we kind of determine or assess the timing in different ways. The Project C6 is an arterial street improvement on West Mercer Way, and we primarily base the timing of arterial street improvements, which is rehabilitating our roadways basically or maintaining them, based on the pavement condition. The Category D is, the Category D Project 3 is an East Mercer Way shoulder project, where it's not a pavement type of preservation project, but it's adding pavement to an area where there is no pavement, so we're not looking at the condition of an existing pavement. When we look at the existing roadways, we want to make sure that we're paving them in the right timeframe before they degrade too quickly or too much, and that's part of why we want to do the pavement maintenance 101 next year as well. But it is something that if the council wants us to look at potentially switching around timeframe-wise, we can look at that and present the information on the 4th.
If I might be so bold, I wouldn't necessarily say about switching them, but helping us understand why staff has recommended the sequence that they're in, and then I think council can have the conversation about whether or not that makes sense.
I can answer that right now.
Sure.
So for the west, for the shoulder project, that's Project D3. If you look at Project D4, that's also two shoulder projects on West Mercer Way. So if you look at both of those lines in combination, D4 has a project in 2020. Go ahead, two years, and D3 has a project in 2022. Go ahead, two more years, D4 has another project in 2024. What I'm trying to show is that for the Mercer Way shoulders, we try to do one shoulder every other year. So that's the timing that you see in this six-year TIP. We try to do that one, one project per biennium. And then for the West Mercer Way roadway paving project, C6, that's based on the pavement condition, and you may recall that we do an island-wide pavement condition analysis every three years, and we do that so we can spend money in the most efficient way on the projects that need it the most at the right time. So that's why these projects are slotted the way they are.
So, I'm sorry, so I understand the every other year, but I also know that the, doing the shoulders on the ways has been an ongoing project for several years, and so I'm just raising the question whether or not I can be expedited at least one year. I understand that they're two different types of projects, but I suppose if the West Mercer rehabilitation project is something that could be delayed one more year, then that's still a possibility, so I...
So what I would suggest is, I need to read Clint's mind, and I've known him for a long time, and what he's trying to tell me is that we're doing the pavement condition analysis this year. He's telling me in my mind again, let's wait till next year, when we have that data, and we can figure out whether or not the timing for West Mercer Way, the arterial overlay, is the right timeframe, or if we can push it out, or if it has to be accelerated, but it would be on the best available information that we get later this year. He's nodding his head.
Not sure. See the brainwaves moving? So from what I understand, Benson, are you comfortable with leaving it as is, with the understanding that there will be more data coming back next year?
Yeah, and I think it just, I, the answer is yes, I am, it makes sense, but I guess if you could make a note that, that, once you get that data, then let's take a look at D3, to see whether or not things can change.
Will you be coming back with the pavement report, Q1?
That would, that can or will be part of our presentation or study session when we talk about pavement maintenance.
So I'm just reiterating, so it probably comes back Q1, and then Q2 would be the TIP?
Yes.
Okay, so Council, we were in Section C, is there any other project there? People are looking for additional information.
Can we just, C7 and D5 again, that Gallagher Hill, is that pretty likely to stay in 2023, or is there a chance it'll get pushed out? I know there's no chance of moving it forward, but...
Reading the street engineer's mind again, we want to do the pavement condition analysis this year, and then in the next TIP, we'll bring forward any modifications based on what we find.
Okay, cool, so if you could just keep that on your radar, that seems like an awesome miss.
Okay, good. Section D, there's two projects where we've seen a status change. That would be Line 6, which is a Southeast 40th sidewalk improvement, Gallagher to 93rd, and 92nd Southeast sidewalk improvement, 40th to 41st. One is the first being modified and the second being new, both of them showing up in the out years of 2025. Patrick, D7, well, actually, potentially, either of them, has there been any input from the school district on that? Because I know that isn't that mega block area.
Actually, both projects, D6 and D7, are higher priorities for the district. Both of those projects would directly serve students and pedestrians that go to the mega block school, any of the schools. And they fill in missing links in the pedestrian network, especially on 92nd.
We did review this, I believe this was reviewed with the school district, and they were comfortable? Sometimes by virtue of the fact that they didn't show up during the comment period, you know, but I didn't want to be that bold. Okay.
Anne always connects with the school district during the public comment period to find out if there's anything that is rising to the top, if they have any emerging issues that are pedestrian-related, and these were it.
I'm going to talk, ask a question about D5, the Gallagher sidewalk. Is, I mean, is that really necessary? And obviously, safety, I guess, but I'm just wondering how many people actually go up and down that hill?
First...
You can argue that once you have it improved, then maybe they will do more, but I'm just curious.
That was part of my argument, but this is a large, significant missing link in our pedestrian network. About four years ago, we had 15 or 20 public comments requesting that this gap be filled, and a lot of those people that were commenting live just on the other side of I-90, in the neighborhood there.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Council, not to say that it's over and done, but are we ready to move on to Section E, which is East Link Traffic Safety Mitigation Projects? I think just spent a fair amount of time on them, Bruce.
And here, I just will sort of ask the question, maybe a little bit rhetorically, but a crossing at West Mercer Way, $700,000 for that. Now, we've got the money available from Sound Transit, but that doesn't feel like a reason to spend the money, and so it just begs for me, is that really the right kind of budgeting for that crossing? It feels like a lot of money for a spot that, I understand, gets a lot of use, but is there a creative way to do something that is successful for less money? And similarly with E3, $800,000 there, feels like, you know, no engineering here, just a sense that that's a big chunk, and is it in there just because we got the money and therefore let's spend it?
For Project E2, we've had the opportunity to do some initial pre-design work, and that pre-design work has informed the construction, or estimated construction cost, of $500,000. For E3, it's kind of a placeholder, because we have to look at alternatives and determine what would, what the best design would be, and we need to coordinate with WashDOT, because the project limits are within their right-of-way, but we wanted to get something into the TIP so we could at least start the preliminary design and analysis process, where as a staff, as an engineering staff, we like to plan, we like to finish things on time, and we want to be ready for the trains, and this project, E3, is right next to the entrance to the train station, 77th and Sunset Highway, and so we want to have a comfortable amount of time to try to get through the process, so we're built before 2023 or into early 2023, because I don't think anyone knows exactly when trains are going to start. Sometime in 2023, I think that's the target.
Actually, what might be helpful, I'm just going to follow up on that, is when, I remember having the initial, that initial kind of question about West Mercer Way, and then I know that it's shown up in some of the Aubrey Davis draft ideas, but also that it's more than just a crosswalk, it's far more than that. So at some point, it might be helpful for us to get a better sense of the visual, or the magnitude, the order of magnitude that's there, but I'm comfortable for tonight.
That was actually my question, which is what exactly is contemplated for the scope of the project? I mean, is it, is it the Aubrey Davis parking lot that they're talking about adding?
No, so in, so in full disclosure, Patrick and I didn't really talk about it before, before tonight. I have a consultant onboard, fair to say, they haven't put much pen to paper, but in my conversations with the public leading up to the selection of the consultant, we know we have some concerns about access to the on and off ramp, we have acts, we have, we know we have concerns with the access from the I-90 trail across West Mercer Way to get further onto the Aubrey Davis Park. We have concerns for bicyclists that are on West Mercer Way getting onto the trail system. We have lighting needs, we have coordination with the Aubrey Davis Park master plan, so there's a lot of, we also have had constant requests for wayfinding signage and a kiosk at that particular location. So there's a lot of pieces that we haven't been able to land on yet, and the dollars that are identified are sort of morphing all of that into what a project could be or should be, and also recognizing that we have coordination with the DOT. We're going to have some probably more significant design costs than many of the other projects that we've had on the island in the past. So it's bigger than a breadbox, and I can't tell you tonight specifically what will be part of that, but I don't want to short sell the community, given that it's, I've heard a lot of comments from a variety of people about what they're seeing as shortcomings at that particular location, and what, and the types of things that they would like to see for improvements. Benson, are you reaching?
I'm sorry, I have a question regarding E3. You know, I can't remember if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, but Michael from KPG was here, and he talked about, he identified the failure to connect the north-south bike route to the I-90 trail, and he was talking about the roundabout that was going to, and so I don't know if this particular project on E3, if that probably does not include some sort of review of that potential connection of the north-south bike route to the I-90 trail, but it sounds like it's perhaps something related or could be related.
Yeah, exactly, it could very well be related. Again, for the intersection of 77th at Sunset, we don't really have, oh, well, fair to say, we don't have a scope, we really don't know what that project would include. We do know that Sound Transit and their consulting firm are designing the roundabout on, at North Mercer Way and 77th currently, so staff's input to Sound Transit will, I'm going to keep my fingers crossed, will address that access of bikes onto 77th that Michael mentioned at the last meeting, but we will still need to make sure that that connection flows into the intersection of Sunset at 77th, and then continues on its way southbound on 77th, so.
That's great, I mean, it seems like a great opportunity, so, thanks.
Okay, so Council, we've essentially then gone through the list of the projects as currently outlined. Is there anything, any guidance, any directions, any further questions that you have for staff, at least on the list of projects, that you want them to prepare in preparation for June 4th? I mean, I'm sure you can, you can email, et cetera, but I think the extent to which we can have the conversation here now, it certainly helps, these are large, complicated projects. Okay, the other piece that we have here is the Transportation Operations Maintenance and CIP Management. Those are some of the basic financial elements within funding the TIP. Any questions from anybody?
It's not a TIP question, but I'll just ask, snowplows knocked off an awful lot of turtles this past winter. It's the kind of thing that would have been in the 2019 budget, how are we doing on, when are we going to get those replaced, and how much is it going to cost to get all those replaced?
So our right-of-way team is doing some of the work intermittently with internal resources, we'll have a contract later this summer, where the contractor will actually go through and replace those. We did recognize that, we, you know, we talked about that through our O&amp;M piece moving forward. Hopefully, this is a one-time big expense, we don't know the full cost yet, but definitely our number is going to increase, but that's in scope right now to go out for contract later this summer, installation later this summer, so stay tuned, more information down the road. Hopefully, again, this is a one-time, once every 10-year type of thing, not an every-year ordeal, but definitely they took a beating, for sure.
I know, I have a question. The Metro Transit Shuttle Service, which is $80,000, I think that's the city of Mercer Island, that is the city of Seattle, and I believe Metro, and this is regarding the 630. I also believe, then, that next year, there's some, it's either mainstreamed or it's not a pilot or something, does that have implications for funding for the $80,000 a year?
We don't know yet. The Metro will go through their service planning this summer for, for the change for next March, and we don't know if they will absorb that into their budget, if they will request some additional funding from the city. They, we just don't know at this time, but we do know that they will go through this process, that will, the city will be involved with. So we budget it because we don't know there's going to be a change.
It was an excellent question, and I've heard from Metro that they intend to mainstream it, to build it into their, or at least not call it a pilot anymore, but your question about, should we still be paying for it, is an excellent one, and I think we should go... think we should go and aggressively suggest that we should not. Why not?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Let's try and make that argument and see if we can make it fly.
Yes.
Okay. Patrick, what else do you need from us tonight?
What I need most from all of you is to say good night, sweet dreams, and see you on the 4th.
Okay, well, I can almost get you there. I can almost get you there. Because one of the things that was called out earlier in the presentation was the conversation about Initiative 976, which would basically eliminate the Mercer Island Transportation Benefit District, which is generating 375,000 a year. That's carrying through. I know until you have confirmation, you carry on with the status quo. I'm presuming then that next year, if there is a change in our ability to collect that tab fee, it would show up in the TIP then?
Yes, exactly.
And then looking at the fund balance, there would have to be some reprioritization, noting that that would drive us into deficit in 2024 as per the current project list.
Correct. We'd shuffle some things around, make some recommendations, and ultimately it would be up to the council to say yea or nay, or move some other things around.
Okay. That's it. So sweet dreams and good night and see you.
Thanks.
Well, this council will see you on the 4th. I won't be here, so I'm going to wish you all well. You can drive it home. Okay. Super.
Thanks very much.
Counsel, well, first, a big thank you to staff. That was tremendous. I know there was a whole lot of work that went on behind the scenes and conversations with many council members. So, so well, well done, lots of material. Counsel, the next item would be to go back to what was pulled from consent. Is there an interest in taking a five, 10-minute bio break? Okay.
Okay. I pulled this because I wanted to discuss the funding source. So this was, this was related to the cleanup.
I'm just going to, just for the public's sake, that we're going to move on to regular business, and this item is actually AB 5562 Soil Remediation Appropriation Request.
Perfect. Thank you. So the, the issue here was that this was related to contamination from city fueling tanks, underground tanks. They were gas and diesel. They fueled portions of the full vehicle fleet for a number of years. And so this appropriation of 152,399 is being asked for out of general fund expenditure savings. I talked to Chip about this. He can elaborate if he wants, but it's not really that technical. Part of the fleet is utility, stormwater, sewer fleet, and some is general fund fleet. So I had asked what the ratio of stormwater to regular fleet was, and they calculated that about 26% was non-general fund. So I'm just asking for support, change the motion to appropriate the funding at that ratio, which staff agreed with. And that would just move 26% or so of the 152,000 to other than the general fund, so water, sewer, and storm funds. So if I have a second, I can make a motion.
Is there a second?
So again.
All right, so first and second discussion.
Just a clarifying question. Is this, this appropriation reimbursable from the insurance coverage? I was unclear whether it's on our property where it's not reimbursable or the Honeywell site where it would be.
No, this will be on the Honeywell site. And so far throughout the course of this process, WSEA has reimbursed us approximately 50%. That's been the going rate for this, and I'd expect nothing different for this as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Bruce?
I'm sorry, I kind of caught that, but are you, you're suggesting that 26% of this come from a utility fund and that that's justified, if I understand correctly?
Yeah.
I'm curious which of the three, and, or is it spread across the three in some fashion?
So my understanding was the ratio was going to be driven out of the fleet mix, and I was going to leave the detail to Chip. I wasn't trying to prescribe the percentages out of those funds, water, sewer, and stormwater funds.
And so fleet gets used for utilities?
Chip can talk to fleet.
Help, just help me understand.
The logic behind it, you mean? And so since we're talking fuel tanks, right? And the fleet uses the fuel, you look at, you allocate it based on your fleet. And so 26% of your fleet, not by number of vehicles, but based on M and O costs, relates to the utilities. The balance is effectively general fund. And so it's an appropriate allocation, in my view.
So we're using today's fleet mix to, to prescribe a pro-rata portion of damages effectively to that funding source and say, well, you got, that's the percentage of the fleet, we're paying for cleanup. The whole fleet over these years and decades benefited from the reduced cost of fueling itself.
Okay.
Paid a piper.
I support that. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do I need a motion?
You motioned and seconded already.
What, and do I need to change the motion? Because the motion.
I thought you said in.
No, he, actually, he did.
Okay. Then I misunderstood. All right.
I need, I asked for a second of the motion, but I guess I never did read, read a motion. Let me make a motion. I move to appropriate 152,399 for soil remediation at the 955 site funded by a combination of 2018 general fund savings and available fund balances in the water, sewer, and stormwater funds.
Second.
First, I'm going to look, you're not calling out the proportionality.
No, he, staff's going to determine that. His was a rough, it was a rough calculation that he did, so we didn't want to prescribe it in the motion.
I'm going to look to our staff team whether or not the intent, counsel, is sufficient, or you?
Well, in the discussion, I thought I heard 26%.
If Chip wants to get married to that number, it was a back and neck.
That's an approximation.
Okay, I just would reference the approximation so that we remember the rationale.
Based on 2019 budgeted fleet M and O costs. That's your basis of allocation.
Okay. I think counsel's comfortable with that. The question is, do we need to amend the motion? Or?
I think if we understand that that's captured in the motion as the intent behind it and the rationale, we understand it's an approximation, and that's the rationale for the, the allocation. So she can read it.
Okay.
Appropriate 152,399 for soil remediation at the 9555 site with approximately 74% from the 2018 general fund expenditure savings and approximately 26% from the water, sewer, and stormwater funds.
Are those years correct, Chip?
Those are percentage.
Yeah, not the percentage, it's the year. The 2018.
No.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right. So counsel, aren't we all still comfortable with that?
Works for me.
All right. Bruce, was that an I'm okay, or was that an I'm not sure?
It's fine.
Okay.
It still leaves it ambiguous as to what the split is between the different funds, but.
Do you mean between the sewer water and stormwater?
Right.
It's an even. Do you want?
Is it?
Yes? No, it's not even. Okay.
So it's proportionate to the fleet.
I'm trying to keep it simple.
We're trying to keep it simple because some calculations have to occur to do this.
But fair information, it's based on budgeted fleet M and O costs in the utility funds and the general fund.
Just capture that in the motion.
It's up to you.
She's typing.
We'll give her just a minute to go ahead and read it back to us.
So 20, and approximately 26% from the budgeted fleet M and O costs in the utility funds. Is that correct or not? I just need the language. I'll write it down. Somebody say it.
You gave me a, a portion of it. That portion is correct.
Okay. Appropriate 152,399 for soil remediation at the 9555 site with approximately 74% from the 2018 general fund expenditure savings and approximately 26% from the budgeted fleet M and O costs in the, in the utility funds.
No, no, no. The allocation is based on the budgeted fleet M and O costs in the utility funds.
I will write down whatever it is. Somebody needs to give me the language. I don't know what we're doing.
Okay, actually, Chip, can you go ahead and? Chip, can you support Ally in this?
I, I can. Let me try, let me try. So appropriate 150, you know, 152,399, 2018 general fund. Sorry, appropriate 152,399 for soil remediation at 9555 site with 74% coming from the 2018 general fund, and the remaining 26% allocated across the three utility funds as in alignment with the fleet.
Just based on?
Based on fleet.
Budgeted fleet M and O costs in 2019.
Based on budgeted fleet M and O costs in 2019.
So can I just ask if this has a rate impact, Chip?
No, because what we'll do is we just will take available fund balance in utility funds and appropriate it.
Thank you.
We'll come back to you.
We're going to give her a chance, and then she'll, we'll have her read it back to us one more time. Hopefully, one last time.
Appropriate 152,399 for soil remediation at the 9555 site with approximately 74% from the 2018 general fund expenditure savings and approximately 26% allocated across the utility funds based on budgeted fleet M and O costs in 2019.
Yes.
All right, I'm seeing thumbs up. We're going to vote. Wendy's going to miss the vote? Second, sorry, second?
Aye.
Who seconded? Okay.
At least. Oh, I thought Benson seconded it.
Okay, Benson seconded it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Yea, raw.
Absolutely.
Okay, so 7-0.
Okay, so with that, we now move on to Agenda Bill 5564, 2018 Year-End Financial Status Report and 2019 Budget Adjustments. Welcome, Chip Cordok.
Good evening, my friends. I keep losing our little. I can't count the times I've given this financial status report at after 10 o'clock at night.
It starts like this. Given the late hour, I'm going to give you the abbreviated version, counsel.
Yeah, and so I'm going to shorten the presentation. Guide me, guide me, because this is important. I'm aware of all the sensitivity. I was going to, I'm going to dispatch, I was going to talk about utility funds, I'm not going to do that. I was going to focus on the general fund. I have some summary slides, and I should mention, let me address the one comment that was made earlier in public appearances. On, on, in terms of budget adjustments, that's the one action item for the council. And so you've already seen and approved these budgets, almost all of them except for two. They're all carryovers. You saw them on April 2nd. I'm bringing it back to you in ordinance. We always do this as a matter of housekeeping. When it's just a budgetary amending ordinance, we waive that and then you just approve it. And then there's two little tiny little adjustments, which I'll talk about in a bit. But just to kind of answer, address that one question that was asked, this is just standard practice for us. Can I tee up a few things on the general fund, just to kind of provide some perspective? Because you can get, it gets confusing. And I'm going to focus on the general fund here. One perspective, okay, in very high-level perspective, 30,000-foot levels, let's look at 2018 budget versus actual, okay? And let's look at total revenues. Now, I qualify it. I'm excluding budget beginning fund balance, and I'm excluding one-time interfund transfers in. And I'm doing that because it's, it's anomalous, okay? When you look at the total revenues, we were greater than the budget by 1.1%, $344,000. There's a note there. Those surplus revenues all were unexpected. They're one-time, they came from reimbursements or refunds from the Department of Labor and Industries and Recology. And so unplanned, unbudgeted, and great. It's a great thing to have, right? And so just 1.1% more. When you factor that stuff out, actually, we actually ended the year just a hair below what budget, what the budget, total budget revenues were, just FYI. Let's look at expenditures, because the way you develop surplus is on both sides of the equation, okay? Total expenditures, again, I'm excluding one-time, not ongoing, one-time interfund transfers out. And, and I addressed this in the, in the Agenda Bill. When you look at totals, budget savings, unspent budgets, what I'm talking about, it's 2.4%, okay? That's what the 97.6% of budget converts to, 2.4% savings. That is unusually high for us. By any other standard in other cities, you know, other cities do 3%, 3.5% annual budget savings. We usually are 1% to 1.5% is our typical average. This is high for us. Why? It's all about position vacancies. There were several positions, two positions in Parks and Rec, as I recall, that once they became vacant, we just left them vacant, and then they became cut during the 1920 budget. There were other vacancies that we milked and kept open for a long time. Also, what was unusual is contracted services. There were significant savings in contracted services. It's all over the place, but big chunks of it relate to community planning and development. And, for example, critical areas ordinance and shoreline master program update, those had significant chunks of money budgeted. Well, those budgets were developed based on a assumed scope of work back in '16, right? That's when the 18 budget was developed. And when the council got into the shoreline master program update, you significantly narrowed the scope, and, and that was a really good idea. Well, that saved a lot of money as a result. And so that's just one example where, and as a result, doing that scope, it, we didn't have to do this cumulative impact analysis, I think is what it's called, and that also saved a big chunk of money for us. So my point is, on the revenue side and the expenditure side, this is all one-time. This isn't ongoing stuff, but it adds up to a big chunk of money when you add them together. Questions? Let's look at a little different perspective. So this is, this is budget actual. Yes?
Sorry, I did have a question. What, what, is there any place here where we can see the numbers on this chart if the asterisked items were not excluded?
On, on, yes, I'll be showing them to you in the presentation. They're also in here. I do a separate revenue table and a separate expenditure table, and you see that full detail in both tables.
Okay, so that would be total revenues, including the budgeted beginning fund balance?
Yes.
Including the one-time interfund transfers in?
If you look at page three, exhibit one, so you'll see I have below total revenues, beginning fund balance, and the one-time interfund transfers. It's all accounted for there. And so you can compare the actual 2018 column to the budget 2018 column.
Perfect. Thank you.
But I will address that. I just wanted to simplify it initially, and then we'll come down below 30,000 feet, not just like the 10,000-foot level. Let's now compare '18 to '17, because that's another useful perspective. Again, total revenues, they were flat, just up 0.6%, $160,000. It's complicated, but it nets out to really what's going on is the property tax and general sales tax increases were mostly offset by development-related revenues. Were down 15.5%. Big drop in those. That's almost $600,000 drop. So that offset most of that revenue increase. On the expenditure side, it was down 4.3%. That's 1.35 million. Why? It's because '17 was an anomaly that, remember that 1 point, was it like 7 million in litigation and other related sound transit costs? That was all '17. That didn't happen thankfully in '18. So that's why there's a big drop. Okay. Pardon?
700,000.
70,000.
It wasn't 7 million in sound transit.
No, the, the total costs that we incurred were, was a big number. It was over a million dollars.
Yeah, no, it just wasn't 7 million.
No, I didn't mean to say so. Thank you. 1.7. 1.7. Lisa, this is hopefully to get to what your, these next two slides will get to the fuller picture, okay? So the top line, total revenues corresponds to that first slide that I showed you, the 344,000, the 1.1%. Then let's talk about the one-time interfund transfers. Well, what happened? Remember, the beautification fund, at the end of '18, we closed it. We transferred the fund balance, just a little over a million dollars, into the general fund, okay? Now, I didn't, I needed most, but not all of that 1 million dollars, needed about $900,000. So you see less reserved revenues, you'll see this 894,000. That was needed to balance the 1920 budget, okay? And there's actually a mistake there. That's a correction to what actually got budgeted. I'll be coming back to you. When '20 got balanced, something got left out. And so that's the correct number, 894 is what's needed to balance '2020. That still leaves $155,000 of beautification fund balance available. That still leaves $155,000 of beautification fund balance available, part of the surplus on the revenue side, okay? And then we have a little bit of property tax and investment interest, which is dedicated by to the Luff One Long-Term Care Reserve. I'm trying to build up, that reserve is woefully underfunded, trying to build that up slowly but surely. And there's a tiny little bit for the community planning, development, technology surcharge fee. When you net all that out, you get on the revenue side, just under $500,000, okay? That's 1.7% greater than what was budgeted in '18. That's the revenue side. Let's now take a look, a little more detail on the expenditure side, so I break out all the kind of line items, salaries, wages, and benefits, all your personnel costs. That was about 99% of budget. But you're saying, hey, Chip, what about all these position vacancies? Wouldn't you have been more like 95 or 94% of budget? Overtime. Overtime in fire and police, and I explain it in the Agenda Bill in exhibit one, there was, I think it was seven employees in fires, I recall, that were on some kind of extended medical leave. And so his overtime budget, they overspent their overtime budget. Police similarly had challenges with a couple guys in the academy and another on leaves where they had to use overtime to backfill. And they were able to stay, while both departments exceeded their budget, they stayed really close to the budget by just not doing other stuff that was planned, okay? So my point is simply this, overtime helped offset the position vacancy savings, is why that number is closer to 100%. Contracted services, and I'm including expenditure carryovers in there, that was about 90%. I've already mentioned, that's $230,000. A big chunk of that relates to community planning and development. Let's see, let's touch on all other expenditures. That's 94% of budget. That includes, there was some savings related to training. I didn't go to conferences last year as just one example. There were savings related to printing and the rest of it is all miscellaneous stuff. It all nets out to $748,000. Then you talk about the one-time interfund transfers. And so for, and you know how we have historically the $400,000 annual contribution from general fund to YFS fund to support it, right? Well, in '18, we also planned an additional one-time contribution and it turned out we didn't need that full one-time amount. We only needed 130,000 of it. Why? Because thrift shop sales were better than expected and I wasn't expecting them to have such significant position vacancy savings. And so they had thrift shop staff, the voice coordinator, and the, I'm just forgetting, the Stephen Pults, Ally? I'm just forgetting Stephen's title. Position, it was vacant for most of '18. And so that allowed me to not transfer as much to the YFS fund. They didn't need as much. So that, on the expenditure side, generates $876,000 of one-time unspent budget or expenditure savings. Okay. I'm just going to quickly touch on these because it's late. I know you're tired. I'm tired too. General sales tax, I just want to draw your attention. So I break it down by business sector. Note, construction is flat. The previous year, it dropped by about 26%, so it's flat in '18. Retail and wholesale trade, up 13.6%. Admin and support services, 55%. Why? This is all about internet sales. We're getting sales tax on internet from remote sellers starting in '18. You may be wondering, admin and support services? What's going, I can't talk about specific businesses, but suffice it to say, there's a number of businesses out there on the internet that put themselves in the admin and support services category. They fill that out. And so that's why there's a big bump in that area. Anyways, so that's a great thing. That was part of that Marketplace Fairness Act, which took effect last year. So overall, sales tax was up almost 9% comparing '18 to '17. Utility tax, not so good. Overall, down 1.1%. Why? Electric gas was down 8% because '17 was an anomaly. That was the coldest winter in 32 years. And so people used a lot of heat. Therefore, utility tax from PSC was up significantly. '18 was more normal, and so it dropped 8%. Water, sewer, stormwater, more complicated. It's up 20%. It's a combination of the impact of the utility rate increases in '18, the impact of high water usage in the months of May and June is up 27% compared to May and June of the prior year. And also the temporary utility tax increase that we used to generate $700,000, right, to reimburse the contingency fund. Well, we ended up getting a little bit more than what we planned on. And so the excess, once the contingency fund was fully reimbursed, the excess came to the general fund. And that explains that. Cable TV, '18 was the first year that it was down. It was flat, mostly flat in '17. It's down as people cut the cable, go with online streaming. And I expect that trend to continue. Cellular, long-term trend now since 2009, it's another double-digit decrease in cellular. Development activity, this is looking at building permits issued for single-family in the light green and then the darker green is all building permits, including single-family. You'll notice that '18 is looking similar to the '14, '15 timeframe. '14 is when things really started picking up. '13 was slow, '14 really started picking up. And so, you know, single-family residential permits are down 21%. All building permit types down 15% in '18. This is more dramatic when you look at total building valuation. And you'll notice that single-family residential in '18, that's down 35%. Total building valuation, that should get your attention, that's really significant. All building permit types, it's down 53%. Why? It's the combination of the single-family residential plus you have the sound transit work, which had like a $20 million building valuation in '17, okay? It's gone. And then you had Aegis. That's just a living facility which are looking really great just on the west side of the town center. I just drove by there the other day. Really nice facility. And that was like $18 million building valuation in '17. And so those things fall off and that's why you have a big drop in '18. Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. I always like, all the questions out there about why does it take so long to get to the year-end financial status report, besides the challenges on my own department of having two staff out on five, six-week medical leaves and now two retirements and other things going on, fund balances is what I like to include. Fund balances take time to nail down and I don't get good fund balances until about mid-April. And so that's what I'm always waiting for, is trying to make sure everything is good. And when I'm reviewing the year-end, I'm doing a lot of auditing myself, trying to make sure things haven't been missed or correcting this or that. And so while these haven't been audited, these are solid numbers and I don't expect them to change. What I like to show you, and I do this in your exhibit one for every single fund, what's the composition of the fund balance for every single fund? And in the general fund, there's a total of $5.8 million. The biggest chunk of the reserve is 1.5 million for the long-term care reserve. Compensated absences reserve is just a little over a million dollars. And there's the $894,000 of budgeted fund balance and that we're using to balance 2019, 2020 budget, okay? And so on down the line. You'll see in red there, when you look at the combination of the revenue surplus, okay, that we talked about, and the budget, unspent budget expenditure savings, it's a big number. It's 1.4 million. In my world, this is a great problem to have, as for those that have kind of been around for a while, every single year, there's something that happens that's unexpected and it's a one-time need. It's usually capital project related, but not always. And such as when we were funding the litigation costs, yeah, $700,000 came from an increased utility tax rate, but I used a lot of other one-time monies to cobble together the 1.7 million to pay for all of that. And so this, you know, there's always one-time needs. We're not here to decide how to dispose of it tonight. That'll be a separate Agenda Bill. I'm not sure when we'll come back to you. It's usually between June and September. It probably makes sense to wait till September because I want to see what happens on the soil remediation, to see if we can get a sense of how much more money do we need to spend on that before coming back to you. But we'll visit with the mayor and deputy mayor and kind of nail down when to come back to the council, but that'll be at a future council meeting to decide its disposition. Okay, let me just quickly mention REIT. So we had a surplus when you compared actual REIT to budgeted REIT in '18, over half a million dollars. All that money has been programmed, because we knew when we were developing the budget last year, the REIT was, we were expecting half a million dollar surplus. It was programmed into the six-year CIP, so it's spoken for, just so you know. In past years, when we do the year-end surplus disposition, it's not only general fund, but it's been REIT in the past. And we hear X amount of REIT, and in the past, it would be dedicated often to East Mercer Way shoulders or some other capital project. In this case, it's been fully programmed into the six-year CIP. Yes, ma'am?
Question, if I understand correctly, the state legislature changed REIT, I believe, starting in 2020.
Yeah.
So it's, so not all sales are at the same rate, but the lower-priced homes are at a lower rate, the higher-priced homes, which is definitely the median, and above on Mercer Island would fall into a higher rate.
Right, they bracketed it.
It bracketed it. Will that impact how much we collect or is all the, is the delta going to the state?
Going to the state. This is on the state's rate only, not the local rate, which is the half a percent. So ours does not change at all. There's no benefit, it doesn't. Benson had the same question. It's a good question. What I want you to pay attention is in terms of comparing '18 to '17, another way to look at this, it was down about 33% because '17 had some big property sales, shoreward apartments, Hadley Apartments and Island Corporate Center. Number of sales, down almost 14%, but average sale price, sales price is up 7% as of the end of '18 was almost $1.6 million. Wow, that's all I can say. Budget adjustments, just a reminder, it's in, it's in two places, it's in at the end of exhibit one, but it's also in exhibit three, which is the budget amending ordinance on pages 45 and 49. It includes all the carryovers and some other budget adjustments that you've already seen and approved in previous Agenda Bills. It has two new requests, very minor. There's a new recreational boating safety federal financial assistance grant, $18,000 that police is getting, and we just wanted to bring that to you and appropriate that. And then I forgot, when we did carryovers on April 2nd, I missed EMS rate study carryover that was budgeted last year. We didn't get to, we want it for $15,000. The EMS rate is part of the utility rates, water, sewer, stormwater, EMS shows up on the utility bill. We need to study that every so often. The reason we delayed it is because of Aegis. I wanted, I wanted them to kind of get done and get a sense of how many rooms, because that factors into your rates for long-term care, assisted living, et cetera, et cetera. So that was intentionally postponed for that purpose. Finally, any questions? This is the one council action item is to adopt the ordinance.
Counsel, any questions? Chip, thank you. Lots of material, many months' worth of hard work. Appreciate it.
Yep, thanks.
I have some questions about how 2018 results affect 2019 and 2020 going forward, but it occurs to me that I could ask them more efficiently if I held them to May 21st, and we are going to be talking budget on May 21st as well. Is that?
Yeah, we'll do the first.
appropriate to do that?
I'm working on the first quarter financial status report. Happy to fill those questions, whether it's privately or at that meeting, either or.
Let me, let me get them more refined and then we'll do it that, that way.
Okay.
WCIA reimbursements on the last Agenda Bill, are they going to flow back into the same ratio that we just kind of prescribed? What are we going to do with that?
Hmm.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Food for thought.
They should. They should.
I was just, I'm going to make one comment before we got there, but you know, Chip, I just want to add my thanks to you and your staff for all the work you do over time. And you know, there's obviously been a lot of public scrutiny around budget and a lot of work the staff and council and public are doing around what does the future look like? But in looking at this, it looks to me like you nailed your budget and you know, the differences are small and easily identifiable as things that were completely outside your ability to know going in. And so I say, thank you very much. Gives us, should give us and the public great confidence that the work you're doing is solid and that, you know, no one knows exactly where you're going to land relative to a budget. A budget is a prediction, but you're very much in the ballpark and I think we should all have some confidence that the numbers that are being put forth are solid and should be relied on.
Yeah, please.
So I got a different flavor ice cream. I think there's going to be discussion in the community that that $1.4 million surplus is something to be ashamed of. And in the same vein, as Bruce mentioned, it is really the staff, the city staff that looked for belt tightening opportunities, looked for expense recovery opportunities, the LNI thing certainly was that, right? Somebody put their head down, read through some fine print, checked some math, and you know, was aggressive in seeking reimbursement for overpayments. And that's going to have a bit of a go-forward kind of payback because it's going to change rate. That type of behavior is what we should encourage and not discourage. So I would caution those in the community to go and tout a $1.4 million surplus that is made up largely of some recovery opportunities, rate recoveries, belt tightening, and you know, a shift in some revenues, a small shift, right? The internet sales revenue, sales tax revenue. This is what we need to fix the general fund, is this type of behavior. And we're going to need a lot more of it. So I'll leave it at that, but I want to thank all city staff that have looked for these opportunities, these cost-saving opportunities. I'm sure there'll be more. I'm sure we're going to see more of it because it's going to come in drips and draps. That's all there really is out there, so. And thanks for the, you know, just getting it back to us.
Yep.
All right, your flavored ice cream's a lot more articulate than mine, so well done with that. Then with that, I'll say, move to suspend those city council rules of procedure 6.3 requiring a second reading for an ordinance.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
And I would move to adopt ordinance number 19-08, amending the 2019-20 budget.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no objection, motion passes. We are now on to the last item of regular business, which is the continued discussion of the city Mercer Island transit interchange. And for that, we have city manager Underwood.
Well, so you may recall, you were kind of time-boxed on this item last week because it was our study session item, so it was clear that there was a lot of discussion around this item. And I think from the staff perspective, we're feeling like we do need a little more concrete clarity and direction on how you want to move forward. There was, you might recall, there was a discussion around having a council subcommittee that might scope out the next steps. And then that would be brought forth to the council to discuss and then again, giving direction. There was talk about potentially, because some of you had some very specific technical questions around how Metro would really operate that in the future, maybe so maybe small groups with council members meeting with the staff to go through that. So we asked to bring this back again, just to kind of really continue that conversation and try to get some clear majority direction on how you want to move forward.
Okay, great, thank you. And counsel, you should have received today an email from Kirsten Taylor, 241, where she's outlining next steps for transit integration. And for the public, there's, this is process conversation. That's what this is, is how do we move it forward? It's not, you know, whether we're debating or considering any of the three proposals as they currently stand, say, how do we move forward? So to that extent, what Kirsten has provided is her draft of the list of questions and issues that council communicated last week and then subsequently in email over the course of the last few days. Example, council member Andrel provided some additional questions that came following the council member, or following the council meeting. So the first step in this process was one that was scoping, and that is, have we, has Kirsten accurate? has Kirsten accurately captured the issues that you are, feel are relevant for you individually to pursue in order to make a decision on this interchange? It's not whether or not we're going to explore all of these, but has she first and foremost captured the questions and concerns? That would be the first step.
I'll say yes for my purposes.
Benson?
I have some questions, and she has them.
Anybody else? I believe Kirsten, I'm not seeing it jump out at me, when we had the conversation, I thought we said people would have until the end of this week to come back if there was any points of clarification addition or audition.
If, if they need that, if they're confident that they're set now, that's great, because then I can forward those questions to Metro and Sound Transit even sooner. But if council would like to have till the end of the week, I'm, you know, certainly can do that as well.
Dave?
Yeah, it's actually a question for you. What do you, what, what are we going to achieve tonight? Is it just additional discussion?
Process.
Okay.
How we're going to, how we're going to get to the point where this council can make a decision on what configuration we recommend?
Okay.
Okay? So that was the first question. Kirsten, I would say at this point, hearing, if, if we're hearing no objection from fellow council members, I think you have the list here, okay? But before it goes to Sound Transit, one of the points that I took away from last week is that the deputy mayor, myself, and council member Andrel, you know, a lot of interest in this, would go through this list of questions and determine whether or not it was an appropriate scope. Because one of the pieces, one of the concerns that was raised, would any of these questions necessitate or potentially trigger a reopening of the settlement agreement? And there was a sense that I took away, that I'm looking for tonight, that when council member Andrel, the deputy mayor and myself sit down, that questions that fall outside the boundaries of the existing settlement agreement would not be incorporated into the, the Q and A process.
Okay.
Now, I'm looking to council, is that...
I don't understand the question.
So if there's a question here that says, for example, we want no bus interchange on Mercer Island at all, that would be different from what, I'm looking to the city attorney, that would be different than what is in the, the settlement agreement?
Not to be too picky, but that example is not actually a question, but I understand your point.
Well, it kind of, it is kind of encompassing my question.
So I think the point that the mayor is making is that questions that frankly are not, that are outside the scope of the settlement in terms of, we've already agreed that there will be a bus intercept on Mercer Island, that's already been established. In fact, I thought council member Bassett gave us a helpful recap of that 80th was rejected in favor of 77th as far as, you know, the turnaround concept. And so we've already agreed to certain things, and so to the extent we're now taking those agreements that are captured in the settlement agreement, Section 4, to the extent we're trying to unwind those agreements, that would not be, in my view, a proper question to pursue.
So counsel, one of the criteria that we would use, again, the three of us with the help of city staff, would be to determine whether or not any of the items on this list are outside the scope on the basis of the Sound Transit, Sound Transit settlement agreement as it currently exists. Is, is there concurrence?
No, I don't concur with that, because I think that we're asking for information that's going to help inform a decision, even if it is something that touches on something that wasn't in the settlement agreement, which is one of my questions, how are you getting people on buses from Issaquah to South Bellevue? I don't, I think that's a totally legitimate question. I don't care if it has anything to do with the settlement agreement or not, because it informs what configuration you are going to support.
I had not presumed or assumed that that question would be out of scope on the basis of in or outside of the settlement agreement at this point, so.
So I think, I, I don't see any questions there that shouldn't be asked and answered, whether that actually, you know, whether the answers then try to drive some sort of discussion, the extent to which it drives discussion with King County, that may be constrained by what we agreed to in the settlement agreement.
Any, counsel, any thought, any comment? Benson?
Well, your first question is simply, the first is to have the three of you take a first look at these questions. I mean, you're talking about process, so if we're just going to focus on process opposed to specific questions, I'm okay with that as the first step for you folks to take a look at it, look at the questions. And then I guess is the proposal that once you have these questions, whatever they may be, that you'll submit, submit them to Sound Transit and Metro? Is that the...
The next step that I would envision, envision is that we come back to council and say, this is where we landed.
Scope, okay.
Is council in its entirety in agreement? Now, I think one of the potential paths forward could be to say, these are the questions we need within the context of the bus interchange. Here are additional set of questions. For example, if we determined that it was the, the passenger routing Issaquah to Bellevue that we would like to have additional information on, that would perhaps be, I hesitate to use the word a tier-two question, because I don't mean, mean that it isn't important, but perhaps not as important in answering the specific question before us. What I don't, what I want to recognize is we have a very specific task ahead of us with a very specific timeframe, which I understand is June. I don't know where in June, but June for Sound Transit to stick to its schedule. I'm seeing nodding going on. So with that as a, as a summary, counsel, we have the list, the list of, of questions. The three of us meet with staff, we determine what is in context of further information we need to determine our thoughts, positions on the bus intercept, bring that list back to council for concurrence, and then they would go to Sound Transit and Metro. It's, it's a little bit involved, but this is important stuff.
Are you three trying to come back with a recommendation on option one, two, or three? You're just, we're just trying to get questions answered.
What the questions are.
So once you have submitted your question, once the council has concurred, submitted the questions to Sound Transit and Metro, Metro then responds, then what?
Okay, so you're pushing to the, so, okay, so let me carry it forward. So then, and, and this is in broad brushstrokes at this point. So then what would happen is they would have the opportunity to look at those questions and respond to those questions. Now, the extent to which council would like to meet in small groups with Sound Transit and/or Metro, so that it's not a, here's my questions, here's the answer, but there's more of a dialogue, debate, discussion, probing, that certainly, from what I understand, is an opportunity. What I do think is important is that should council members have those small group conversations with Sound Transit and Metro, that we all come back to council chambers and discuss what we learned with Sound Transit and Metro again in the room and available, so that the learnings that we take from those conversations are equally available then to the public, and they can understand our deliberative process. Once we have that information, it is then our, and we publicly air it, it is our responsibility then to make a decision.
So how do we, everything you said is, I understand. How do we challenge what they tell us? How do we know that what Sound Transit, I'm sorry, Metro says in terms of their operations is in fact the only thing that can be done? If we don't have our own experts that are...
I'm not, I'm not able to answer the question. I'm not in a position to answer the question.
No, I, I'm raising, I say...
It's a somewhat of a rhetorical question.
No, no, but it's, I mean, that was my, I know that we don't necessarily want to pay for a consultant, but I'm just, if we get the information from Metro, Sound Transit, I'm sure they're going to tell us. I, I can already, already guess what they're going to tell us, and it's just a matter of how are we going to challenge that, you know, in terms of...
Well, you, what you've found is a process gap, right? The part of the process we discussed was, would, would there be maybe some, well, I mean, Kirsten's already working on getting some quotes from different firms on some traffic modeling. We'll come back to counsel on the pieces that are not directed at Sound Transit.
Well, I think the other question too is, are you concerned, for example, that, and again, I'm kind of trying to come up with a scenario to articulate without people misinterpreting that my numbers are meant to be accurate. Let's say, for example, that there's historic statements from Sound Transit that says there will be 3,722 light rail boardings on Mercer Island. Are you looking for us to question that information? What, what information, what data, what is the type of data that you would want proved independently? I think that's where I'm struggling a little.
Yeah, sure. You know, well, my questions were focused on, number two, were on the, on the layover and on the, yeah, and so that was, so I just would like somebody else to have an independent opinion that can address my number questions too.
Okay.
I mean, that was my focus, but other people have other focuses, and maybe people will be satisfied with what Metro and Sound Transit provide them, I, I just don't know.
Well, let me, let me give it, read an example, so again, you can help me understand. For example, your second question, can Metro's active and layover bay operations be adjusted to allow for the dropping off of passengers only on the south side of North Mercer Way without buses going through town center? Are you envisioning they would just respond with a yes or no answer, and you would want us to go out and model a whole different series of other options?
The answer, I think, is yes, because, you know, I, yes. I mean, unless they can show that it's absolutely not possible, then I guess...
Nothing possible is operative.
Well, okay.
And, and I'm not trying, I'm just not trying to...
But this is the reason why we need somebody else who's a traffic engineer, who actually, because I'm not, I'm just asking the question, because that was one of the things that we started with, was that it had to be dropped off on the south side of North Mercer Way. And of course, they've said no. I, I understand why they said it. I don't know if it's accurate or true, or if there's any other possibility. That's the whole problem with this process.
Dave and Bruce are going to solve this for us.
I don't think I'm going to solve it. So just listening to it and walked, having watched you guys last week, it's much more fun from the couch than sitting here. So the process presumes that a majority, that Sound Transit has given us some options to select from.
I would, I would emphasize the working group has provided options.
Okay.
If I understand correctly. And it's really Metro, right?
It's Metro.
All right. Should I ask my question? But that presumes that the majority of the council doesn't have enough information to choose amongst those options. Is that in fact accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the, the majority of council, from what I understa...
Is not prepared to, to make a choice of those options.
Let me just clarify, I, they have presented two options, and I, what I've heard from a majority of council is not about, not enough information to choose between those two options. It's a unwillingness to acquiesce to those being the option set.
That's what I understand. That's fair, yeah. I mean, I was, I, the last time we were here, I think I said the only configuration I could support was the limited one.
But are there two options that council's been presented with, or three?
I don't think you're going to land that tonight.
I know, well, I'm, well, I'm throwing it out there, is I think it's a point for clarification. Carrie?
I think from a staff perspective, given what we've heard from King County Metro's team, which Kirsten's frankly worked a lot more closely with than I have, but it's our understanding that the way King County Metro has described what they would concur with, it is limited to either the improved or optimal configuration, not the limited. So there are two potential options on the menu for council consideration, is how I understand it. So the option set is limited to two options, again, improved and optimal, not limited, because it's our understanding, just to be really direct and clear, Metro cannot concur with the limited option.
Well, and so to clarify that, then, what happens if they don't concur?
If we don't have their concurrence, then because they weren't at the bargaining, they weren't at the negotiating table when we were conducting these negotiations with Sound Transit, then we frankly have to continue to work to achieve their concurrence, because the agreement contemplates that their concurrence is required. Because they weren't at the table, and we knew that, and we knew they would need to agree, because they are the ones providing the service, and we knew this. So in terms of what happens, I think we just have to keep, again, as council's trying to do, gaining greater understanding about what operational needs are driving their concurrence, which is focused at this point on only two options, improved or optimal, not limited. Is that, is that right, Kirsten? Do you have anything else to add?
Yes, no, that, that is accurate, and my understanding is they are preparing a letter for the city to outline that, just to be, so that they, their message is clear to the city. And in our settlement agreement, we have provisions in there, I don't have it at my fingertips now, but it says we cannot unreasonably withhold our agreement. It also talks about, you know, dispute resolution there, has several provisions in there. We also don't want to be viewed as being in default of the agreement. So again, there, there are more provisions I can point to in the settlement agreement that, to me, really do speak to good faith, cooperation, and trying to reach an agreement with Metro.
Bruce?
Are you pass? Okay. So counsel, what, what I think we have to do, irrespective of what we should do, what is the right thing to do, is to go forward and to understand what questions, you know, and I'd say the more concrete, the better, but what questions it is that we need answered in order for us to determine each of us, our, our ability to select within the options, whatever the options are. I think we're going to have to have some face-to-face time between, if I can finish, please. We're going to need to have council members have face-to-face time with, I imagine, with Metro and Sound Transit, rather than a paper movement back and forth, which feels unsuccessful to date.
Yes.
And potentially see where we land from there. I'm not sure we're going to resolve anything beyond a high-level process tonight and get started and, and see where it takes us.
Can I also remind us that these are public agencies funded through taxpayer dollars trying to solve mobility for Mercer Island and the region? So we should embrace this good faith and collaborative process, I think, in trying to figure out where between the two options, if you guys want some changes. Having heard this conversation for a couple of years now, I'm more comfortable having you guys get your questions answered and figure out what data you need, but these are experts who've been doing this work for decades, and we have light rail coming. We need to figure out how this is going to work on Mercer Island and how it's going to work for the system that's being built. These are taxpayer dollars, we need to make sure that we're cooperative and collaborating, and also making sure that our interests are met as well as not holding this up for too much longer. There's a lot of public information out there, and we can catch up with that. Hopefully, you can get your questions answered pretty quickly.
Counsel, any more comment, questions? Bruce?
I'll just, so, you know, in the social media sphere, there's been a fair bit of, well, Bruce Bassett said this, and Bruce Bassett said that. And I just, I want to point out that those were, there were comments that were, I made back when we were in the early stages of negotiating what the bus intercept would look like, prior to us reaching an agreement. And that agreement was an agreement that this council reached with, with Sound Transit that resulted in the end of litigation and the settlement payment to us. But it said there will be a bus intercept, there, it will have this configuration, it will have to have some further tweaking by Metro. And, and so I, I know, I know there's some in the public who, who don't like that, would like, sort of like to relitigate it, because they don't like that outcome, but that is the outcome, and it is the contractual outcome that we, we face. And so to, to not go down that path is to put ourselves in breach of contract, I think. that path is to put ourselves in breach of contract, I think. And so, to me, we, I can suggest we want to laser focus on the things that are causing consternation for council members, and let's try and really focus on very specific things that keep you from being ready to, to say yes to that, but keep the scope of your questions very tight to, to what could still remain within the contractual agreement, yet satisfy you more than what is currently proposed, rather than something that's a much broader look. And so, to that, you know, how, I'm there, but how you get there is, I'm willing to support just about, you know, whatever it is you want to get there, as long as that's where you're going. So your, your proposal to have a subcommittee and-
No, I'm not proposing, I'm not proposing a subcommittee, I'm proposing small groups, as they so choose, you know.
Sorry, you earlier suggested three, talking about a narrowing of questions. I was fine with that, if that's where you wanted to go. I'm fine with something else, if you want to go there. Just get very focused on, on the specific questions you have, but keep it within the scope of the, of the settlement agreement.
And to Bruce's earlier point, I might remind you to think about other technologies and systems and users of those pullouts, too. We don't know what autonomous vehicles are coming, we don't know what kind of shuttles through other private employers might be using these pullouts. Think about the system that's going to work 20 years from now, 40 years from now.
And I think it'll be great. We'll have the opportunity for Metro and Sound Transit to raise that and make sure that gets raised in front of the entire public. Okay, so I'm sensing that we're at something of a standstill here, so I feel like I've largely laid out a process at this point. And I would, Kirsten, do you have what you need?
Can I speak now?
I didn't know that you-
I was told to not interrupt you, so I was just waiting until I could be called on.
Okay, you're called on.
So, the gap that I see is that this list needs to be broken into what, where the question goes. Does it go to Sound Transit and Metro exclusively? Does it go to them and possible go out to bid for a consultant to put a price tag on? Does it go to council member, do your own homework? We're going to have to find a way to, for the three of us to go through these questions, have Kirsten assemble it in something like Excel, where we can have these three columns, and then we can float this back to council quickly, you know, hopefully this week, to say, do you concur? Is this the list? Because there's a gap, and I want to make sure Benson's questions, my questions are at least captured in the sense that I'm not going to be satisfied if I get a model from Metro on that intersection. I specifically want to see that done by a third party that we bring in.
I'm not sure I want to spend money on a third-
It's okay, we can get some concurrence around whether we do it or not, but what we're trying to do is capture the information needs of council to make a decision. And if we get concurrence on that, then that's that. But if we want to drive this process home tonight, I would urge you not to talk about the content, just the process. We got this list, it's not, this is missing some items, right? There's a few that came in from-
No, this revised, this revised to include questions.
So we just need to stratify it into where these questions are going to go to be asked and answered, and if we can get concurrence on that, so that every council member feels like their questions are going to the right place, doesn't mean they're going to go there. If there's a cost that's going to come back to council, then I think we're, we have a process.
Well, and I think the question, whether or not those fall, to me, what is still open then is the extent to which we're going to parse those, this list of questions, on the basis of whether or not it falls outside the current settlement agreement.
I mean, I can look at the list, and it doesn't seem like it's that hard. Nobody's saying, instead of a bus interchange, kind of ice cream shop.
Yeah, well, maybe we could do this, that part of the exercise over coffee, on an AM sort of a basis, versus a late PM?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I think the process makes sense, and I just would say that, to the deputy mayor's point, and to Councilman Wiker's, I mean, I think we still need, and it sounds like Kirsten's going to get that information regarding the cost. If a consultant's going to cost us $100,000, then forget it. But, you know, but Kirsten, you're going to be able to get some idea.
Yes, we do have some preliminary information. I will say, we have had one, one firm that has said they are conflicted because of work they do with Metro, so they won't be able to provide, you know, this service for us, but we are still looking for other, other firms that can help.
But that's actually encouraging, because it means that Metro will have a model that they could provide to us. This was a modeling firm. So that's a great example of where a question might go to two places, one to Metro for a model, one to another third party for a model, and the cost of that would be approved by council.
Yes, and we will, we will have to determine if they have the kind of modeling that you're talking about. And we are pursuing that, and going back and forth to make sure what kind of information we have that's available, and that a firm would, would need. So, yes, we're in that process of finding that information.
Okay, have we landed this one? Super. All right.
Mayor Bertin, can I ask one question about the small group meetings? My concern is just scheduling, if, if council would like, if there's enough council members who would like to have small group meetings, it would be helpful to say, we'll schedule those around this week, because it's harder for those big organizations to be as nimble scheduling-wise as we are. And if we don't know that now, that's fine, but it would be helpful to-
Let's put out a poll. It's fine, I don't, I don't think I'm, council members are going to be ready right now to pull up their calendars and figure out what we can try to find consensus among potentially seven of us.
So it might just take a, you know, two or three weeks out to be able to schedule that, is my concern.
Well, I think if you could send out an email, you know, if there's dates that are available, or if Sound Transit and Metro can provide some suggested dates, maybe across the next couple of weeks, that, we can go with that.
Okay.
But I don't see us landing it tonight.
Okay, but it sounds like maybe there's, there's enough interest that we definitely would want to go there.
I know I do.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so with that, we are now done with regular business. We move on to other business. Any upcoming council member absences to report? Again, just a reminder, I'll be gone for the first meeting in June. I may also be gone for the second meeting in June, because that is middle school promotion ceremony night, starting at 6:30, but TBD. So, yes, so for those of us who have eighth graders, I think it's just myself and the CM, but you, I don't know that we're on your agenda anymore at that point. So, with that, planning schedule, and Julie.
So recall, counsel, we had posed a question on whether or not we could have that Mercer Island Coalition study session sometime in May. That is not looking possible. You all have very busy, busy schedules, so I think we circled back with Judy, Jody, Chris, to let her know that. She's fully aware, she's understanding, and we're just trying to see if there could be some dates, maybe in June, to bring that group back together. Also, ask Cindy if she would kind of expedite and bring back to the council for your consideration, her continuing to move to that staffing model of paid staff, again, with the hope of really trying to improve revenues at the thrift store. And so, hoping she can bring that back. We're looking at possibly, I don't know, I don't believe it's on your planning schedule, but the first week of June, we're looking to bring that back for your consideration. And then, let's see, other things to point out. Oh, I'm really excited about this. This is on June 4th, this is a study session. This is Zach, he works at our community center, he is PMing with, along with Jesse, a potential pilot project for short-term commuter parking. So it's pretty exciting. It's using the Tully site to create a process whereby we would implement a pay-for-parking structure using technology. And so Zach has been tasked with pulling that together. He just briefed me last week or so. You're going to be so impressed by him. So, I'm so excited about the work he's done. And so, we're hoping to bring that back for your consideration on June 4th, to just, just have an initial talk about, is this the direction you want to go? Recall that we currently have access to the parking at Tully's, and that's really kind of what we're focused on. So I'm excited about that item. You do have your required public hearing on small cells, also on June 4th, your adoption of the TIP. Hopefully, you'll adopt the critical areas ordinance, and we are formally bringing, you probably noticed that last time, we've gotten into the, I think, a very good practice now of having an agenda bill for your board and commission appointments. So you see that scheduled for June 4th as well. And I know the mayor and deputy mayor will be meeting, I'm sure they will be soliciting your input on those appointments, but I'm very excited to see our community members come out and volunteer. So, and that's all I want to point out right now.
I think I would add another important one, and that is the interim city manager element. So I think, I'm going to look at Saleem and staff and hope that we can come back to council with a recommended approach at the next council meeting, just given the shortness of time.
Right, that's right. And we may need to, well, just have to determine that, schedule an executive session to discuss the qualifications as well. So that is something we'll be, I'll be obviously talking very closely with Debbie and Saleem on kind of how to pull all that together for you. So, but the idea being that you can make that appointment prior to my departure.
Great. Counsel, is there anything else for the planning schedule? All right, council member reports. We'll start with you, Wendy. Lisa, Benson, Saleem, Bruce. You have a sticker on your sleeve.
I didn't know that was there. I attended the governor's signing of a bunch of bills like this today. It was pretty exciting. It was a very nice thing to be able to see Washington State move to kind of the forefront of clean energy. And so, big step forward, kudos to our legislature, and kudos to a lot of other folks who worked on it. Last week, I had a chance to take a tour of Cedar Hills with a handful of other Sound Cities Association members. It was pretty fascinating to get a tour of the, of the waste site. It is huge, and if others are interested, I'm sure further tours could be arranged. Let me, you know, I can put you in touch with them, or let them know directly. And that's it.
Dave? The only thing I would call out is Friday, we do have an ETP, East Side Transportation Partners, meeting, and on the agenda there is going to be a presentation on some of the water transportation initiatives that are being looked at, piloted and considered. So that whole concept of water taxis, potentially on Lake Washington. So if anybody's interested, it's at the Clydes Manor, Marymore Park, starting at 7:30. So with that, unless there's anything else, AM, Friday morning, 7:30, AM, Clydes Manor, Marymore. Be there. All right, we're concluded.